Good morning, welcome to the July 18th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And I'd like to start out today with a word of prayer from Ali. There you are. If you'd all stand if you're able, and then we'll follow with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Bismillah, Remainer Rahim. In the name of Allah, the most beneficent, the most merciful. Good morning. My name is Asif Ali, and I am a member of the Shia Ismaili Muslim community of Cobb County. Thank you for the opportunity to begin today's session. The Ismaili Muslim community celebrates diversity and embraces pluralism. The role of the intellect, pursuit of knowledge, and sharing of time and talent for the betterment of society is part of our value system as Shia Ismaili Muslims. Values that also form the bedrock of our American identity and gives us all hope for a better future for ourselves and for our children. His Highness, the Yaga Khan, the forty-ninth hereditary Imam of the Shia Imam Ismaili Muslims, and a direct descendant of Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, speaks about pluralist societies and the role of cosmopolitan ethics. At the Jodidi lecture delivered at Harvard University in 2015, as an ethic that resonates with the world's ethical and faith traditions. He shares, a cosmopolitan society regards the distinctive threads of our particular identities as elements that bring beauty to the larger social fabric. A cosmopolitan ethic accepts our ultimate moral responsibility to the whole of humanity. Quoting the Holy Quran, "O mankind, fear your Lord, who created you of a single soul, and from it created its mate; and from the pair of them scattered abroad men and women." He reminds us of our common humanity and our moral calling. In 658 CE, the first Imam of the Shia Muslims advised his friend Malik Ashdar, the governor designate of Egypt, on his responsibility as an administrator entrusted with governance of public affair. He advised, "What should gladden the heart of an administrator is that the state is run on the principles of justice, equity, and equality, and love and trust emanate from the citizen towards him." Honorable members of the Cobb County Commission, I wish you well in your deliberations today and every day. It is my hope and humble prayer that you find joy in your public service and that your efforts are blessed with insight and wisdom. May you find strength to make choices and resolve matters fairly and equitably for all citizens. We pray for your success and the peace and unity of our citizens. Our community is grateful for the invaluable service you provide and thanks you for your dedication. Thank you and have a great meeting.
I wonder if that ruler in 658 CE had ever done a zoning hearing? Okay, so with that, John, I believe I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. Then, when each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for opposition to signify they are here, so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be requested to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if anyone testifies, second. It's important to note that each side gets ten minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your ten-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because it's important to realize that each side only gets ten minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their ten-minute presentation period, the Board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional information. After that, the Board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the matter at hand. There's one case on today's agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-36 of 2017, ALCD Acquisitions LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's agenda which the applicant is asking the case to be withdrawn without prejudice. That's rezoning case Z-22 of 2017, Venture Homes Incorporated. The applicant is asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice.
We hear a motion to accept. Okay, we have a comment from Commissioner Burrow first.
Yes, good morning. This just came to my attention this morning, that requests for withdrawal without prejudice would be presented on Z-22, and there is some opposition here from the community, Ms. Julia Smith. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, without prejudice means they can come back at any time, or do they have to wait a year?
Anytime.
They can come back at any time, okay. But...
We'll put with posting in the hearings.
Yeah, they have to go through the process, all right. Okay. So Julia, are we good with that? Okay, thank you. Do I need to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice for Z-22? I make a motion.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero, thank you.
And thank you for being here, too.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-9 of 2017, Parent Homes. That case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-9 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-12 of 2017, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the September 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-12 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-27 of 2017, Ameritech LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the September 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-27 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-34 of 2017, Josh Thompson. That case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-34 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-37 of 2017, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-37 of 2017 will not be heard today. SLEP 7 of 2017, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 7 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 28, 2017, SMB Investments Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the August 15th, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 28 would not be heard today. Additionally, Mr. Chairman, Board, there are three cases on today's agenda in which the applicants are requesting continuances, and they came in today or a few days ago. First case is rezoning case Z-18 of 2016, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. The applicant is asking for one last continuance on this case, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, in this case, the applicant and the community have been working together really well, and there's just a few items left to resolve and kind of clarify, so I make a motion to continue Z-18.
You have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
And that case is being continued until the August 15th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Additionally, the applicants for Other Business Item Number 16, Lidl U.S. Operations LLC is asking for a continuance until your August 15th hearing, Mr. Chairman, Board.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
We do have some folks in opposition that I have already talked to about this, and because we currently don't have the recommendation from the Architectural Control Committee and some other incomplete proceedings, I'm going to make a motion that we continue it to the August 15th zoning hearing.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. And the last case that's asking for a continuance is Other Business Item Number 25, Barnes Mill VDL LLC. Mr. Chairman, Board, they are asking for continuance so they could work on their site plan, I believe, and the applicant did request this a few days ago.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Certainly, this has been an ongoing one, and we've got some recommendations from planning staff for DOT, and I wanted to give the opportunity for the applicant to work on that, so motion to continue thirty-six.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. The ringing of cell phones does interfere to broadcast presentations, so if you have a cell phone, please put it on silent mode. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is on the table in the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to the Board of Commissioners the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the Board at their discretion. Lastly, I would like to announce the Community Development's monthly newsletter. This publication will host a variety of updates from each division of Community Development, including zoning. It is full of useful information and serves as a valuable resource to everyone in Cobb County, and more information can be found on this at the Community Development website. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for July 18th, 2017. Rezoning case Z-23, Courtney Ellis, request rezoning from PSC NR 20 to NRC for the purpose of a childcare center in Land Lot 59 of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the north side of Michael Drive, east of Brackett Street. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to the LRO zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Hours of operation to be Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., with no operation on national holidays. Minimum of twenty parking spaces to be provided. Maximum of thirty children. Twenty-foot landscape buffer along the southeast property line adjacent to 2333 Brackett Street, except where in conflict with the existing driveway landscape plan... Except where in conflict with the existing driveway. Landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist and district commissioner. At a minimum landscaping to provide beautification at the front of the building. Existing driveway to be upgraded to county standards, or the circular driveway may be removed. Sidewalk to be installed along the property frontage. Building to be painted, with the district commissioner approving the color. District commissioner to approve any changes to the building architecture. All landscaping, parking, and buffers to be completed prior to the occupancy of the building. And staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-23? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
I have a couple comments on the commissioners, so Commissioner Cupid and Commissioner Rock, okay?
Yes, Commissioner Rock, go ahead.
Mine is, John, on the zoning comments, the second paragraph, it just rambles on and it talks about that they're proposing six to eight parking spots, current code calls for at least twenty for daycare, as well as twenty-foot landscape screening buffer adjacent. And it just goes on, and it talks about basically contemporaneous variances. They're not listed as contemporaneous variances, which they should be. Luckily, the Planning Commission and in the recommendations, it puts in as stipulations things that will correct those variances, but this is not useful written this way, when if you don't really pay attention to what's written, you don't know that the applicant is applying for contemporaneous variances for parking in the buffer. I've just, I've never seen it written this way before, and I just think that we need to be a little more careful in how we describe, because it just kind of says what they're doing, but saying it's, well, it's kind of okay, but kind of not okay. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, we'll work on making that shorter and easier to...
Well, I mean, it just, in every other case, it would be listed as contemporaneous variances.
Okay.
I think it's confusing, especially if, you know, somebody who's not familiar with zoning is reading it.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to have the applicant approach, please. Yes, if you can approach, thank you. Good morning, Ms. Ellis.
Good morning.
I wanted to modify some of the conditions that we have here, some of them which I did talk to you about.
Okay.
One of them was a request to increase the number of children. I understand right from the start is allowing you to have more than fifty children on-site. We have that number at thirty. I'm willing to meet you at forty, and then if you want to request additional children in the future, you'd have to come back and other business to increase that number. Are you willing to go up to forty?
Yes.
Also, I wanted to remove the sidewalk to be installed in front of property frontage. This is an old community, there are no sidewalks in this neighborhood, and your property is somewhat inside the neighborhood, and so for this to be added without there being any in this community, I think would be onerous and just wouldn't fit in with the rest of the community. Also with number nine, I'd like to modify it, where it now states building is to be painted, district commissioner to approve color, that the district commissioner is to approve building architecture and color and the signage, which should also match the building architecture and color. Are you comfortable with me reviewing that and approving it?
Yes.
Once it is determined? Okay. Those are all the changes that I have.
In the staff, the land use recommendation for parking spaces, you've got twenty, but there are five, and in parentheses, it says on grass. Is that addressed in the stip letter?
It's addressed in the Planning Commission comments, for it to be a minimum of twenty parking spaces.
But I'm talking about, there shouldn't be any on grass.
They're all going to be on paved.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're going to have to adopt that consent agenda item with the revisions?
Yes, the clerk has revisions, so when we make the motion to adopt it, we just need to make sure, Commissioner Cupid's revisions are included in the motion.
Okay. All right, so I'll make sure. All right?
Okay.
Rezoning case Z-31, Bobby El Terrill, request rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of retail, and land lots 349 and 372 of the Sixteenth District. Located on the east side of Kenton Road, north of Chastain Corner, and at the western terminus of Leamday Drive, the Planning Commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on May 3rd, 2017, with district commissioner approved minor modifications. Letter from Kenton Road neighbors dated June 26th, 2017. Professional offices and neighborhood retail uses only. No outdoor storage or outdoor displays of merchandise. Site plan review comments and recommendations. Planning Division comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA. Thirty-six seventy-one thirteen for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-31? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Burrow has the comments.
Yes. Good morning. Mr. Terrill, we discussed some revisions I had to the prohibited uses, and you're agreeable to those, and I will just read those to make sure we're on the same page. No pawn, title pawn, or check cashing establishments, no convenience food stores with self-service fuel sales, no automotive repair or car sales, no parking for vehicles, no laundromats, no massage parlors, no tattoo parlors, and the design guidelines upon redevelopment. And then you also had the owner sign the pedestrian streetlight affidavit, and I appreciate that, and I want to enter these for the record, and it's fine on consent.
Okay. Commissioner Weatherford?
One of the stips said no parking for vehicles. I wasn't sure what that, did you read that again?
No parking lots, like offsite parking for stores.
Sounds confusing. I just, is there a better way to say that than no parking?
Like a car lot?
I know what you're talking about, but you said no parking for vehicles.
Well, let me read, can you... I'll have that. Lori, can I have that sheet back?
Maybe I'll just turn it back.
I don't know. That was adopted with the Planning Commission comment, so I just kept that in there. No parking for vehicles, other than the ones...
Customers.
Customers.
Thank you.
Okay.
No stipulation, no customers either.
No customers.
Is that okay, Bobby?
Your luck with your business.
I just add outside customers.
I'd like to get a little bit of clarification on the use restrictions, because the letter from the Kenton Road neighbors and what you sent me on the email is a little bit different, so I'd like to make sure that what the Board of Commissioners, what our district commissioner recommends is what we have to live by, so that we don't have to go back and discuss it if some of the other things come up at a later date.
Right, and that's what this list is, that I'm submitting for the record, what you and I discussed in addition to the...
I'm perfectly happy with what you and I agreed on.
He's happy. Thank you.
And I don't get happy easy.
That's, I was...
We're going to get struck by lightning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bobby. Good seeing you.
I just added outside customers.
Happy Easter to you.
And on this one, there's already sidewalks, so you're safe on that respect. Thank you.
I think we're over this one. Moving on.
Rezoning case Z-32, Windy Hill Self-Storage LLC, request rezoning from ONI and TS to RRC for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in Land Lot 875 of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the west side of Leland Drive, on the east side of I-75, north of Windy Hill Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to RRC, subject to the following conditions. Letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 16th, 2017, with the following changes. To item number two, add to the end, final design of the building facade to be approved by the district commissioner. Item number four, add to the end, at least one full-time employee will be onsite during regular hours of operation. To item number fourteen, subset B revised to read to fifteen feet on Leland Drive. Item number fifteen, strike reference to plan review process. Item number fifteen, subset E, add/or that would be in direct conflict with or contradiction with, to any of the applicable Cobb County ordinances or codes, or any of these stated stipulations. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 27th, 2017, including the revised site plan, with the following change, to item number five, strike it in its entirety, and staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-32?
Hey, we have some comments from the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I'm going to, on the Planning Commission change on item number fourteen, I'm going to strike that and put ten feet. And the rationale for that is that that portion of Leland Drive is now closed to Windy Hill, and there will be a move moving forward from the applicant to work out an agreement with the county for the abandonment of that portion of Leland Drive.
Okay.
So the fifteen feet kind of goes against that. So the change also applies to the SLEP, which is SLEP six, so for the clerk, removing the fifteen feet and putting ten feet applies to Z-32 and SLEP six.
Okay, I'm just sort of curious, some staff recommendations.
Okay.
Paragraph D, at the very end, it says, "This project has the potential to service nearby residents and businesses with a development of appropriate size, while still following most guidelines set out for that use." I mean, what does that mean? What guidelines are we not following?
All right, there is, and this is another example of what I just talked about. There is a contemporary variance to the FAR.
Okay.
Okay, which almost every single self-storage facility comes in and asks for, but it's not listed as a contemporary variance. And then there are, some of the setback variances are listed, but it's kind of what I was talking to John about, is that it's kind of, the paragraphs are not clear.
All right.
But the stipulation kind of addresses all that.
I just sort of like, you know, you're a pilot, so we follow most of the checklist. I mean, it doesn't, it just sort of, you get my point. It opens up the question, what are we not following? And I think that if there's some issues here, clearly he's already covered those by what he said. If we use his terminology, then it answers the question. Do we know where the water pipe's going to be on this thing?
They are working out an agreement. The existing pipe is actually the one that caused the sinkhole that the county had to fix, and they've agreed to move it.
Okay.
So the exact location hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
But in meeting with the applicant, we talked about the fact that they're going to move the pipe.
All right, okay. I was just curious about that, because on the diagram, is that dotted line the pipeline?
The one that goes right through the middle?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
And then they're going to move it so that it's accessible, and we don't have the same problem.
We don't have the sinkhole.
Right.
It's a good thing. Is that a stipulation, no sinkhole? And is this building bigger than the category allows on that lot, or not?
It does have an increase in FAR for the lot.
But that's a contemporary basis, okay. Just want to make sure, so I think if we just use the current contemporary terminology, we should be set.
And I read section D again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Rock. I think what he's referring to in the last section of D are the requirements in the comprehensive plan, not the requirements of the zoning code.
Okay, all right. But again, if we clear, I mean, when you start using adverbs like that, you know...
And I think some of what's going on here is, this is removing, Mr. Chairman, if you know where the Bubbles Car Wash is on Windy Hill, and it's also removing part of the extended stay hotel that's behind it.
Okay.
So the benefit to the community is that it's dealing with that issue, so I think the staff might have been trying to nicely talk about that.
Think about, okay, I'm fine, I just want to make sure that we don't leave any, you know, our job is here to try to comply with the code, is to comply with the code and defend that code, and I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Okay, but I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, rezoning case Z-33, Davin J. Prasad, request a rezoning from PD to R-15 for the purpose of single-family residences in Land Lot 66 of the Sixteenth District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Shallowford Road and Shallow Farm Drive. Planning Commission recommends approval to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on May 4th, 2017, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 7th, 2017. Lot size variances for track A and track B, from the minimum fifteen thousand square feet to fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-five square feet and fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-six square feet respectively. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-33? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-35, Robert Thompson, request rezoning from R-15 to R-20 for the purpose of single-family residential in land lots 320, 321, and 328 of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the west side of Civitania Road, south of Cooper Lake Road. Planning Commission recommends approval to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Maximum of one home with no variances. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-35? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Excuse me, John, I'd like to add one more stipulation, if I can have the applicant approach. Good morning.
Morning.
Yes. Have you determined a final building elevation for your home yet?
We have not.
You have not, okay. What I would like to do is to have you provide that to my office once that's determined for approval. Are you okay with that stipulation?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
One more thing.
Sure.
It was recommended to be approved, not site plan specific.
Yes, sir.
Is that included?
Yes, sir. Yep. All right, thank you.
So we had that one changed, Lori. Okay. Rezoning case Z-38, Pebble Brook Development LLC, request rezoning from R-80 to R-20 for the purpose of a single-family residential in landlot 30 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Old Dallas Road, southwest of the intersection of Dallas Highway and Old Dallas Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. District commissioner to approve the final site plan. Stipulations of Z-47 of 2016 not otherwise in conflict. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore, dated June 28, 2017. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-38? Let the record show there's no one opposed. SLEP-5, Stein Investment Company, request a special land use permit for the purpose of climate-controlled self-storage in landlot 206 of the 20th District. The property is located on the southwest corner of Cobb Parkway and Attic Parkway, northwest of Old 41 Highway. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on June 15, 2017, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-5, Stein Investment Company? Let the record show there's no one opposed. SLEP-6, Windy Hill Self-Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of climate-controlled self-service storage facility in landlots 874 and 875 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Leland Drive, on the east side of I-75, and on the north side of Windy Hill Road. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 16, 2017, with the following changes. To item number two, add to the end, final design of the building facade to be approved by the district commissioner. To item number four, add to the end, at least one full-time employee will be onsite during regular hours of operation. To item number 14, subset B revised to read 10 feet on Leland Drive. Item number 15, strike reference to plan review process. And item number 15, add subset E, or that would be in direct conflict with or contradiction to any applicable Cobb County ordinances or codes, or any of these stated stipulations. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 27, 2017, including the attached site plan, with the following change to item A, or A. Item number five, strike in its entirety, and staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-6? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into the other business items on consent. Other business item number 24 is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for D.R. Horton, Inc., regarding rezoning application Z-210 of 2005 for property located on the east side of Maxim Road, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, in landlots 87 and 88 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to proposed site plan contained in the other business packet. Buffer planting plan to be approved by the county arborist. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Yes, let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 24?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this wall in the buffer?
Yes, it's one foot within the buffer.
One foot within the buffer, okay. Not in the middle of it, but one foot.
It's one foot, and they're giving a foot back, so it's gonna be a 26-foot buffer instead of 25.
And the wall is eight feet high or six?
It's eight feet high in the middle, and then it tapers down on the ends.
So I thought the ordinance says it had to be six.
It's six if it's a cut facing a neighbor's house, but this one, the wall's facing the internal houses.
Okay.
Well, it's also not on the property line, right, John?
No, it's not on the property line.
Yeah, because the six feet is, if you're on the property line, and then as you move back, you have to do the five-foot increments every five feet.
Okay, all right. I'm just curious as to why there were no staff comments, given that I had some questions.
There were no staff comments, Mr. Chairman. When we have other business, we send out the packets to stormwater, water and sewer, DOT, and fire, and no one submitted any comments back for that.
Okay. All right, sounds good, thanks. That's correct.
Okay. Other business item number 26 is to consider amending the stipulations for Atlanta Rola Derby Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z-14 of 2016 for property located on the north side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of North Allen Road, in landlot 45 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to allowance of commercial indoor recreation, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 26? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 27 is to consider amending the stipulations for Majid Sududeh regarding rezoning application Z-5 of 2006 for property located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, south of Wellington Lane, in landlot 753 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to allowance of house to face Johnson Ferry Road. House to use the existing joint access road, no new curb cuts onto Johnson Ferry Road. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 27?
Yes.
There's one person opposed, Mr. Chairman, so we'll pull that off and hear it in its regular order.
All right, Mr. Chairman, let me see if the opposition, because the things that I was gonna ask to add was the removal of the existing basketball court, and the applicant agreed to no variances on setbacks or impervious. And also that the district commissioner approved the final site plan, or house plan. Does that address any of your concerns?
It does not.
Okay.
It does? Okay, all right, we gotta pull it. All right, so we're gonna pull that and put that on the regular agenda, right?
Correct.
All right, and then Commissioner Weatherford has a comment.
Mr. Peterson, if you could, go back on SLEP-5. And did you mention the stipulation letter dated July 11? Thought of it, I don't know.
No, I did not.
Okay, would you please add that from Mr. Bailey, dated July 11, 2017, the stipulation?
Okay, letter from Mr. James Bailey dated July 11, 2017.
Clerk have that? Thank you, sir.
The lady had concerns about other business 27? Who is that young lady? Yeah, could I ask you to come up here for a second, please? Thank you. I just wonder if maybe you could, have you talked to the applicant about this zoning? Face one-on-one, or?
No, I have not.
Would you consider doing that?
Absolutely.
And then we'll leave it on the regular agenda for now, but if you can work out the concerns, all right? Just try to make this process a little simpler, but more importantly, address your concerns.
Happy to do so.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. And Mr. Majid? Could you, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks for working with us on this. John, we'll still leave it on regular, all right?
Okay, we'll leave it on regular until we hear otherwise.
Until we hear otherwise, right.
All right, and that completes consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think we're ready to move forward on the other cases?
We need to vote on it.
Oh, we need to vote on it? I knew there was something on this.
That's one of the necessary evils, sir.
In this case, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a consent agenda as revised.
Second.
There was a second?
With the exception of OB 27.
Oh, well, I thought that would be part of the revision.
Oh, okay, sorry, yes.
But noted that OB 27 is in limbo between consent and regular item. But we'll address that, but I hope that covers that, okay? All right, so we have a motion, a second, and a discussion? Call a question? Then pass is 5 to 0. Now we can do the other stuff.
Yes, sir. All those folks on consent agenda, your business is done, you can leave for today.
Or stay. You know, it's a great place, it's air-conditioned, we have free water.
Free today.
All right, sorry, John, I'm sorry. I distracted you, I apologize.
No problem. Rezoning case Z-25, Venture Homes Incorporated, request rezoning from CRC NLI to FST for the purpose of townhomes in landlot 421 and 422 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, south of Lefford Drive, or south of Lefford Street. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-25? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there's four people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name is Sean Randall, I'm Senior Vice President of Venture Homes. We were the applicant last month, this case was put on hold to hopefully address four major concerns that the commission had. I think obviously, or I got the sense that the commission was predisposed to try to do something positive with this piece of property. And so I want to try to take each of these four concerns and address them independently and leave three or four minutes for Mr. Walsh, our land planner, whose firm did this, what I think is an outstanding land plan, as well as helped design the architecture for this project. We also have Richard Smith with Vaughn and Melton Engineering Firm to discuss any of the stormwater issues. We are 95% complete with a full hydrology study. We think will have a very positive impact on stormwater in the drainage basin. And I also have, again, Tamina Khan, who owns the strip shopping center adjacent to the project. We are now up to, in two days, canvassing the neighborhoods, the single-family residential neighborhoods of Harold, Daniel, Pat Mel, Benson, Gober, Mosley Drive. We have 71 signatures in support of this rezoning application. So she's here to speak if you would so like. As I took notes, the four areas of concern, Chairman Boyce specifically mentioned affordable housing. I did get with Debbie Blair, we are committed to affordable housing on this project. We think the 220s to 280s range will make that very possible. And I think if you drew a three-mile radius around this property, 220s to 280s would be extremely affordable relative to the new stuff that has been coming online. So affordability oftentimes is tied to increases in density. And that was one of the other major concerns that Commissioner Burrell brought up, was density. The other two were setback variances and stormwater management. So I'll try to take each one of those. If you go to 1A, there's the site plan. And just to refresh everyone, the whole south side of that property is Belmont Crossing Apartments. Zone 20 units to the acre. Now, they are apartments, but the effective zoning, it's RM12, but it's 20 units to the acre. On the north side, you have Madison Village, 14 units per acre. And Tamina Khan's shop is there on the north side, adjacent to the substation, which is right across the entry from the Lockheed Dawkins. But anyway, so the density is very strong in that area. We do back up to three single-family homes on Harold Drive. So that, obviously, much lower density. But that's the only place we touch that has anything less than 14 units of density or commercial zoning. We have zoned four townhome projects, Venture, in the last probably 12 months. They've all, they've averaged 6.3 units per acre. So townhome density is by its very nature dense. But the good news, this site plan only has 37% impervious surface. The R-20 standard is 35%. We think we can reduce our impervious surface to even meet that standard at 59 units of density. The setback variance was another concern. We are asking for some relief on that. However, where we butt up against those three single-family homes, we will increase that. It's right now at 33 feet. We will increase that to 40, which is the county standard. We will ask no variance against a single family. In terms of stormwater management, I said Richard Smith at Vaughn and Melton is here and has worked very extensively with Dave Braden. We have reduced the peak flows off our site anywhere from 30 to 50%, well above the county standard for any new development. We can stop the trash runoff coming off our property and any property north of us. Now, one of the big problems is, this is an 80-acre drainage basin. We're only nine acres of that, 80 acres, about 13%. But we will improve this stormwater runoff situation. And if this were developed according to the zoning, the impervious surface could be 60 to 70%. 60 to 70%. We're 37, going to probably 35. We think it's gonna be a quality development. We're gonna have a mandatory HOA. We will limit rentals to 10%. And one of the interesting things, when I first met with, how am I doing on time? Okay, one of the interesting things that I, when chatting with Commissioner Burrell, she said, "Well, why don't you talk to Commissioner Ott and Commissioner Keupin, get their input on what they think?" Well, I took a step further and I actually talked to Commissioner Weatherford. In two minutes, two minutes, I'll say everybody, I talked to anybody who talked to me. But the interesting thing... Well, you know, the interesting thing was, two minutes into every conversation, I got, "Well, you know, I think this used to be in my district. This parcel, this tract, used to be in my district." Even Commissioner Weatherford, which I said, "West Cobb? This was West Cobb?" And what I found was, now it's East Cobb. What kind of Cobb is it? But the issue that I really found intriguing was, to a person, everyone said, "You know, we need to try to do something to help this neighborhood. We've had this land use in place, we've had this land use in place for 19 years. Those apartments are still there. They're probably gonna be there for another 29 years, 39 years."
You might want to let your friend tell you, you got three and a half minutes. So if you want him to talk, now is the time.
The point being is, this is the little orphan Annie of Cobb County zoning. Let's try to make it good. 15 million worth of tax revenue, a substantial increase in the quality of the residential, and a great gateway into the 6, 800 new jobs. Why don't we switch over to?
Three minutes.
I'm Tom Walsh with TSW, thank you for allowing me to speak today. We are a planning firm that has designed walkable communities all over the United States, and we're very excited to work with Venture Homes. From the standpoint that one of the biggest national debates today is the messy middle, homes that are not affordable, and we are looking for that affordable product. And when Venture Homes came to us, they had a product that we would not have designed and the developments they were doing, we would not necessarily have done. But they've worked very closely with us, and so we've created a product as well as a walkable community. If you look at the sketch on, this is the rear-loaded product. But if you look at this usually price point house, the size... What, if you look at this usually price point house, the side, or we call the end grain, is normally very bland and has no windows or maybe one window. Our end grain has a wraparound porch now, and we have windows on the side. So if you look at it from the side, it would be a beautiful architectural building as well as from the front, as well as from the back. So we felt it very important to change the architecture, change the style. Would you go to the next sketch? And the most important one is the front-loaded product. This is, we've done this in downtown Woodstock, if you've been down downtown Woodstock and seen the product. We only have 12, the townhouse is only set back 12 feet, so the car cannot park in front of the townhouse. We did that on purpose because in normal developments like this, usually this is 20-foot concrete, then 27 feet of concrete for the road, and then another 27, so you could land a Cessna on that road, it's so wide and it's all concrete and it looks horrible. So we have parallel parking for guest parking when you have the front loaded, or we have some 90-degree parking near the houses. And then the people would have to park in their garages as opposed to store all of their equipment. So we feel that that's a beautiful front. And again, if you notice that we have trees in each one of these, and we've just done this in a project that's going on in DeKalb County for Venture Homes. I think the other thing, argument I've heard, what is so important is that in many areas, like we're working in Brookhaven, where it's starting to revive, bringing product in like this really does increase property values and helps the neighborhoods in surrounding areas. So to me, this is a very important project for not only Venture Homes, but for our firm and for you all, because it has that affordability component to it. Thank you.
Hey, so this is Commissioner Burl. Oh, have opposition, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Now we have opposition, so... Okay?
Good morning, my name is Dennis Campbell, I am Director of Planning for the Cobb County School District. We are concerned about this particular development. It brings in a significantly dense development, which will yield a significant number of students. And we have in the area, Green Acres Elementary, which is very overcrowded. So it presents an adverse situation, certainly for that school, and for that, we have significant concerns and hope you'll consider that. I'd also like to address some comments that were made, I think, the last time, and I may be paraphrasing here a little bit, but that the district should be happy with the tax revenue that we receive from these developments, and we are. But I want to explain a little bit about the tax revenue. Property tax revenue goes into our general fund. About 90% of that general fund money goes to compensation and salaries. It's not a capital improvements program. The other 10% pays the bills and things like that. So that brings us to SPOLOSS. SPOLOSS is our educational SPOLOSS that we passed recently, is our capital improvements program. When we are faced with a new SPOLOSS renewal, we do an extensive month after month analysis involving a lot of people in all the schools, and we determine what our needs are going to be. We come up with about $2 billion of needs this time around. That's not exaggeration, that's a real number. You probably know that a one-cent sales tax is not going to raise $2 billion. It's not even going to raise $1 billion, so we're not even halfway there. It's going to be something less than that. And that's our capital improvement budget. So what we have to do is pare that way down. We got to get rid of a lot of the things that we would like to do, that we need to do, and we wind up with situations like Green Acres, Dewest that we talked about in the past, Mabelton that'll be coming up in the future, where we just don't have the funds to do the kind of capital improvements we would like. So we come to you sort of hat in hand to say, "We have some concerns here whenever these densities like this come up, and we'd just like you to listen to those concerns. There isn't the money that we need or would like to have to do the capital improvements everywhere, and we hope you'll just consider our concerns." With that, thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Karen Burt, I'm a second-generation Cobb County resident, property owner in Daniel Drive. My family's been in Cobb County for 49 years. I completely believe in a positive, friendly development with proper green space utilization. Yes, Venture Homes met with us yesterday, Commissioner, and the drawings of the townhouse were very, very nice. I thought they looked very nice and all that. They've already addressed one of the issues I had about the variance and changing the variance on the west side of the property. But one, you know, if the property owner insists on building townhomes, I at least request that the density really be addressed. The density, bringing it to 50 units for the whole project, or 51 units for the project, because this area really does need good quality items. I kind of disagree with my neighbors, where they believe it needs to be commercial. I don't agree with that. I agree that the best thing for this community is to have a high-income home. I don't necessarily agree with affordable, because this is a recessed area on the Atlanta Road corridor anyway. But I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you, and y'all have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Ken Daniel. I've spoken before with regard to this rezoning application. But I do concur with some of the comments that were made by the planning staff with regard to traffic that would be generated by this project, the overcapacity of the schools, which we've heard about. We have not heard about the proximity to the Lockheed and Dobbins activities, which this is not far from it at all, and my house is definitely in the flight path of Dobbins. And also the incompatibility with Cobb's land use plan. This was, in fact, a case that went before the Superior Court of Cobb County. But I do wish to emphasize two issues in particular, the building setback variances and stormwater management concerns. Mr. Randall has talked about that they have changed on the west side to go back to what would be the regular setback of 40 feet on that side. But on the other sides, that's the short side. If you look on the north and the south side, those are the long sides. And those variances, the setback variances there are supposed to be 40 feet, and they're asking for this to be cut back to 20. That is half of the distance. And when you look at what they are going to be backing up against, you see that there, it is those apartments, and especially for the ones to the south, which again is the longest of the lines, Belmont Crossing Apartments, that property has already been granted variances for building setbacks. So you've got two adjacent properties that are wanting building setback variances. When you look at the distance that is going to be between those buildings of the townhomes and the apartments, it's not going to be positive in terms of the value and salability of these townhomes. I live on the south side of the Belmont Crossing Apartments, and I have a 200-foot buffer zone, and it's wooded. These people are going to have much less than that. But from my house, just this past weekend, I heard music coming from those apartments, and it was loud enough for me to be able to understand the lyrics of the music. These people in these townhomes are going to be only 20 feet away from that property line with no trees? Because, I mean, there's not going to be much room when you've only got 20 feet, you're not going to have much protection there. I can also say that I know when the garbage is collected for those apartments. It's collected on Mondays at 4:30 a.m. And I can be woken up in my house, 200 feet away, hearing those dumpsters being rattled and emptied and flapping as they go from dumpster to dumpster for those apartments. These townhomes that are supposed to bring up the values are going to be 20 feet away from them? I have spoken with people on Harold Avenue, and even though you're now talking about a 40-foot setback, they're still concerned because those are single-story homes. And they're really not pleased with the idea of having two-story townhomes looking down on their backyard. I brought a petition as well. I don't have as many signatures as Mr. Randall, but some of his are as much as four blocks away, which they're not going to be very impacted by this property. But the signatures that I got are downstream and where the stormwater is going to be coming through, and I also got signatures from those people on Harold Avenue that are going to be the adjacent property owners to it. My big concern is that these townhomes are not going to maintain this value, being wedged in between these two sets of apartment complexes which are over-density. I think instead of these townhomes raising up the value of the apartments, I think the opposite is going to happen. The apartments are going to bring down the value of the townhomes, and the townhomes are going to end up being in almost the same class as these two over-density apartment complexes. And you're going to have three of them right in a row contiguous to each other. And there's also been the discussion about the stormwater management. As you see on the display there, they've got two different basins. Currently, the water from Basin B goes toward Harold Avenue, and the water runoff from Basin A comes through my property and goes downstream into this protected street.
Excuse me, sir, the time has run.
Okay, if I can wind up, but they're talking about now shifting and having all of it from Basin B going in into the property.
Okay, we understand your concern. Thank you, appreciate your time. Okay, now Commissioner Burl.
Yes. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? I know they've run out of time, but I didn't know if there was anyone else.
Wanted to speak? In favor or opposition?
In favor.
Did he use all his time for the 10 minutes on the front end?
Yes, he did.
Okay. I'm sorry. We can't allow that, right? Okay. Okay. When we met last month and to hear this case, we, of course, did have opposition and at the planning commission prior to our meeting. And because of the area and some concerns and interest in trying to improve the area, we, I agreed to hold it to give an opportunity for the community and the applicant to meet and see what we could work out. We did have a good meeting yesterday, I think, productive meeting. So I kind of have some comments that I'd like to go through and then ask for discussion and see where we are here. This is in a CAC. As you can see, it's light industrial and CRC. It does border apartments, rental units, apartments on both sides. And they are older, and there are some existing issues with the drainage from those now. In this proposal, FST is required to have 45% impervious surface, and as you heard, they are at 37. If this were developed as industrial or CRC, they would be allowed 70% impervious surface. And they're pretty much half of that, at half of that, and have agreed to get to half of that at the 35. I do have concerns with the setbacks on the rear mainly because of bordering single-family homes. And then I also have an issue with the density, where you see all the trees and green space in the middle of the property. That's the stream buffer that runs through there, so that's, you know, good that they have some green space, although it's not buildable as it is. And if we reduce, if we reduce the 59 units down to 53, we could take these six on the rear out, and that would give you a nice buffer more than the 40 feet that backs up to the residential. It doesn't address really the 20 feet on each side that where they were required 40. But that backs up to multi-use apartments, so that's kind of my thought on that. There are existing issues with the runoff. And if you look on the, can you put up the GIS map, David? Thank you. Can you move it up a little bit so I can get Daniel Drive where the neighbors that spoke live? You can see Daniel Drive right at the very bottom. Can you go up just a tad more?
There you go.
There you go. You come in off of Atlanta Road, and this is the single-family homes where our speakers live that address that issue. So you can see the runoff, that they have now issues with the apartments up here, but I want to ask Dave Braden to come up and kind of address what we discussed yesterday with the runoff for this property.
Yes, ma'am, again, David Braden with the Stormwater Management Division. Some of these items have been discussed by several of the speakers as well as the Commissioner. As is already mentioned, the underlying zoning here is LI and CRC, and in the CAC, that would be, come in and get a permit for, as was said, 70% impervious is what is allowed there. And FST is 45%. So when Stormwater sees that, we say that that's a pretty significant reduction in runoff already. And they have, they have proposed, and I think they've said they'll go down to 35, but the existing plan right here is a 36, 37, 36.7, which is 37% impervious, which is almost a R 15, R 20, R 30 impervious coverage for generation of runoff. So, but knowing that there were downstream problems, because we've been dealing with Mr. Daniels for a while, this whole basin is about, I think it's, I think they said it was 80, I calculated about 70 acres of drainage area. So there's 70 acres of basin upstream of this, which is all Atlanta Road, all the widening that's been done on Atlanta Road, all the commercial developments that are right along Atlanta Road, all drained down through this stream. This site is only, is 8.6 acres, so it's only just barely 13% of that basin. So they cannot, they can't solve the problems of 87% of the rest of the basin with what they can do on this site. But part of my comments were that they do a significant reduction in their peak discharge from what would be allowed from code, which is the runoff from this undeveloped site with trees on it as a natural basin. And my recommendation was to reduce it to the next lowest storm, so 10-year to 50. We typically do this for problems with downstream. So 10-year at the 50, we typically do this for problems with downstream drainage. They have gone a good bit over that, which usually results in about 20% reduction in peak discharge. Their design for here already is about 50%. So they're reducing the runoff peak discharge from the site 50%, not of a residential development or the developed site, but 50% of what's running off the site now as an undeveloped wooded site. So that's, for us, that's a pretty significant increase. And then again, that's just for their site.
Right.
They can't do anything about
Right.
All the offsite that's coming through their site. So.
That addresses the concerns, I think, that it, you know, it would be an improvement over commercial or industrial.
And additionally, they were mentioning about the trash and debris in the stream, and obviously, that's an issue too. That violates our litter ordinance as well.
Right.
Their new culvert across the property, their access, again, will probably help with the upper basin, but they can't do anything about what's coming off of the apartment site below them. And that has been an issue in the past with tires and other kind of debris coming through their property. So that's a code enforcement issue, but not directly associated with this site. Any other questions?
Do y'all have any questions? Thank you, David. Okay, if we, there's some things in the STIP letter that I need to point out. Sean, if you'll come back up. The most recent letter I have is June 1st, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Number three, the last sentence, we need to strike because it addresses price points.
Okay.
And we don't
Let me grab my copy.
We don't control that. I mean, you can say it on record that, you know, the range, that's not a problem, but we don't need it to be a stiff, that they will be
Yes, ma'am.
220 to 280s, okay? So I'm striking the last sentence in number three.
Yes, ma'am.
And then in number seven, we want that to be 10%, no more than 10% rental
Agree.
At any time.
That's correct.
And then I'd also like to add that a notice, deed restriction notice, that they're in an industrial-compatible commercial area, is that legal? I don't know. To MDR?
Yeah, what I would do is, if you're getting rid of the CRC and the LI, just ask staff to bring forward in January a change to land use map to a residential category. Because industrial-compatible means that in the future, the board would be moving towards an industrial use while this is going to be developed. So it's not going to be a future industrial. Because basically, this is going to take the undeveloped portion and develop all.
Dina, can you come up?
Commissioner, if the Board of Commissioners approves this request, this will be considered in your January comprehensive plan meeting as a zoning amendment, as a zoning decision change.
Okay, so we wouldn't need that.
Correct.
Okay. And then on the 10% rental, if that's put in the covenants, we can enforce it, correct?
It has to be a zoning condition to enforce, for us to enforce. But of course, then it's a matter of the actual enforceability of that, and that is, how is that going to be done? If it's in the declaration, the HOA can handle that. They can monitor the 10%.
We will absolutely put it in the declaration and make it a part of the homeowner's covenants.
Okay. And that's how it's worded in number seven? You just need to reduce the 20% to 10%?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I'd also like to add, are you agreeable to Georgia Native Plant Society rescue prior to cleared and grading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to add that as STIP number 23. And also a reversion clause, if a land disturbance permit is not issued within 18 months, it reverts back to CRC and LI.
Yes, ma'am, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then the STIP letter dated June 1st. So I'm really struggling with this because of the opposition, and yet we also heard from the school board. Sean, what, you've got the 1,800 to 2,400 square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
But what are the number of, the units? What are the number of bedrooms or?
Minimum three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, but the 2,400 square feet will be four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath typically. And I can put that
And how many, how many are there? Four bedrooms?
That'll be, that'll really be market-driven, and that's why we say, you know, we're going to build, you know, probably 1,900 to 2,400, 2,500 square feet is the range. But that really, we'll start some and see where the market takes us, whether it's more 1,900 square foot. My sense is here, it will be more 2,400 square foot. But I, you know, I can't, I can't, you know, actually pin down a number on that.
Well, I was just trying to see what, what the majority of them are going to be as far as for families or millennials or what market you're going after.
In our townhomes right now in Cobb County, there are a lot of young families, but we also get, we also get some folks that, you know, the kid's last child just went off to college, et cetera. So it really is a mix of the entire market. But we find even the four bedrooms are very, very attractive because one becomes kind of a home office, you know, work-from-home space, and then they still have, you know, three bedrooms. But it's a true cross-section.
Well, I do think this will improve the area and, you know, the, definitely be an improvement from what's existing there now. And the stormwater management, I think, will be an improvement, not necessarily for the existing issues, but you can't be responsible for that anyhow.
Yes, ma'am.
But you are being responsive for your site. A couple of other things. We do have an ordinance on trash pickup in Cobb, in unincorporated Cobb, no trash haulers are allowed prior to 7:00 a.m. So I will let code enforcement know about the apartments, the trash pickup at the apartments. But I am going to add a STIP that you comply with the noise ordinance for trash pickup, and that would be STIP number?
25?
And then I'm also, this isn't a STIP, but I'm also going to email the neighbors that had concerns with the watering sewer coming from City of Smyrna and the Health Department contacts for that, because that's an existing issue on another property that they need to address with the city and the Health Department. So Inger will do that. So I guess I'm ready to make a motion.
Do you want to make a comment before the motion?
I'd wait.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve Z25 to FST, delete to FST, with the maximum number of units of 53. And striking the last sentence in number three with the price points. STIP letter, June 1st. I thought I did. Okay, with reference to letter, June 1st, 2017, from Mr. Randall, no more than 10% rental under number seven. Add Georgia Native Plant Society rescue prior to grading. Number 24, if land disturbance permit is not issued within 18 months, the property reverts back to CRC and LI. And number 25, compliance with noise ordinance for trash pickup. I'm sorry. Staff comments? Come up.
I'm Rock. I'm with the Cobb County Fire Marshal's Office. This is a different product than we've seen. There's no parking in the driveways. So our recommendation is that one dedicated guest parking space per unit. The other formula that we use is a half a parking space per unit. So, and that's when we do have driveways. Here, we have no driveways. So we have a concern, once we're built out, we won't have anywhere to park the cars, we won't have to shut them. So I've expressed this to Mr. Randall. He has increased the parking, but he's not to that ratio that we have recommended.
Okay, can you stay up there? Can you put up the site plan? So he's required to have one parking space per unit?
No, the code is one-half per townhome unit.
Yes.
One-half.
The code hasn't caught up to this. So the code and what we have reacted to is driveways, 20-foot driveways so you can put two cars in the driveway. We haven't caught up, we're in the mix of it, you know, but this is the first time that we've seen this. And we're told that it forces them to park in the garage, but if you have a guest, you're using a guest parking space. If you have two guests, you're using two guest parking spaces.
Okay, well, there's, there's, how many spaces do you have where they're outlined in the?
There currently, as I counted this morning, about 29 spaces, 29, maybe 30 spaces.
And what do you need?
We, I need, well, half, I need 26, 27 now with 53 units. I need 27 by code, and I've got 29, 30. Where there are parallel parking, those streets are 27 feet wide. So there's plenty of space there, plus it's going to be in the HOA documents that they can't park on the driveway apron. They've got to pull into the garage. We don't want garages being used as self-storage, they're for parking cars. And that will be enforceable by the HOA. We feel like there's plenty of parking at this site and plenty of access to move, you know, emergency vehicles around, which we're obviously very concerned about health safety.
Okay. Well, I can add a number 26, that garages cannot be converted to living space, and that he is required
Absolutely.
To have 29, 27 spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
Offsite, is that?
Off-street parking, yes. I think that's the term, is it not?
Our recommendation with our experience is that one guest parking space per unit. If you, if you have a teenager that drives, where do they park? They park in a guest parking space. And then if you have one guest at your home, you're using two guest parking spaces. What we don't, we don't want to hem ourselves in where this is a built-out environment and we don't have any options.
Okay.
So that's why we said one. Now, you, with your experience, you may say, okay, maybe you need to get to .75. Instead of .5, maybe you need to go to that .75 parking space per unit.
Commissioner Burrow, I think if with the six units that you're removing in the back, I think there's room, there's probably room for almost 15 spots and still keeping a good-sized buffer against the community in the back.
That's what I was thinking, too. Okay, so what would be the minimum number of required parking spaces that we are going to need?
As Mr. Randall said, I can't dictate it because it's not in the county code, but our recommendation was one, if you want to say .75, that's the middle ground.
Okay. What's .75 times 53? Somebody, I don't have a calculator.
It would be 40.
It would be 40? And you have 29 now? 27 or 29 now?
Yeah, 28, 29 now.
And I think you could easily get another 11 in that back part that we just talked about.
Okay. So number, STIP, I'm going to add a STIP number 26, that the garages cannot be converted to dwelling. And
For the off-street parking.
Yeah, minimum 40 off-street parking spaces. And a minimum 40-foot setback on the rear there where you're removing the six units.
Yes, ma'am.
Minimum 40.
Yeah, yes, 40-foot. Yes, ma'am.
If you can get more, that would even be better.
Okay.
So a minimum 40-foot rear setback. And then your parking can go in there. And any, the final site plan and landscape plan to come back to the district commissioner for final approval.
District Commissioner, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
And all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
We have a motion, we have a second and a discussion. We sure, oh, I?
All right, just two things. Number one, I mean, I would say that this used to be in District 2, but everybody had it at some point in time, as we heard. I think some important things to note is that at some point in time, when each commissioner had this, the previous zoning, just nothing came. What is coming across the street is the Georgia Tech Research Institute is adding 800 jobs. You know, they're buying a large portion of the Lockheed site. So you have 800 new tech jobs coming into the area, literally right across the street. So I think that this location is ideal for folks that would be working over there, and in some cases may not even have to drive. They would be able to walk or ride bicycles or something like that. The second thing, and I don't want to sound like we don't appreciate Mr. Campbell coming. I mean, it's been a long time coming to get someone from the school board here to comment on the zonings. But I just want to point out that in the school comments, in the zoning analysis book, there is additional comments that say, after 2019, relief will be provided for Campbell Middle School by the construction of a new middle school, and after 2019, relief will be provided for Campbell High School by the addition of classrooms. So although this will put them over, more over capacity than they already are, this is one instance where the school board is kind of ahead of the curve with the fact that they have some new schools and new classrooms coming into the area. So I'm supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with Commissioner Ott's comments and the fact I feel like this is an ideal spot for this. It's a redevelopment area that I think we all at one time or the other had tried to, tried to get something going there. It's a classic infill development. I think the stormwaters, as mentioned, are going to be improved because of developments that are hurt by this development. And I expect with the addition of the jobs across the street and this development, there will be a halo effect that would make this area a little bit more progressive and growth. I have some concerns and confusion about, if you look at the GIS that we're looking at now, we're talking about 20-foot buffers, but it appears to me that both apartment complexes on we're talking about twenty-foot buffers, but it appears to me that both apartment complexes on the north and south are, have a substantial buffer behind the apartments already. So the effective buffer is, is much more than, than twenty. And then the six units that were removed because of buffers, looks to me like the yards on Herald Avenue are long, if not a hundred, maybe more. So you really already have a built-in buffer for those. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to why there's an issue with the buffer when there's existing buffers already on either side of that. So I think sometimes we need to look at the effective buffer as opposed to the buffer just for this development. And if you look at these apartment complexes, it appears to be a fairly large buffer behind each of those. So other than that, I, I don't see a reason to take the six out other than for parking, but those are my comments.
Cupid?
Yes, I agree with all the comments stated thus far. If there's anything, I, I still have a concern with is the parking. Because we have some townhome communities in the district where parking is indeed an issue. And we've actually had a fire at one of our townhome communities. And people were parking on parallel sides of both streets, and it made it very difficult for the fire truck to come through. So if there's any suggestion I would have, it would be for you to also put in your stipulation for the additional parking spaces to be interspersed throughout the community. If they're all at the rear, it's very unlikely that those at the front of the unit are going to be using them, even if they're provided. I, I think having them as accessible as possible to all the units is important.
Well, I think you can, if these six in the rear are removed and you increase. The rear setback to the minimum forty feet, which is required. You know, you could still move some of these up, up near the drainage or whatever, down in the back here with parking, and then fill in up further, like twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one could be parking. And still, and move them, shift them back to the rear and still have a forty-foot buffer and parking and additional spaces up here.
Yeah, to, to Commissioner Cupid's point, the parking is interspersed all throughout the community right now. And where we have parallel parking on the street, that street is twenty-seven feet wide. So you can parallel park and still have two-way traffic free-flowing throughout the community with the parallel parking. But there's parallel parking, and I can't see the unit numbers, but there's parallel parking scattered throughout the community. There's, you know, six or seven units by the pavilion there in the green space, there's, there's six or seven units out front. And then parallel parking scattered throughout. Plus there's, plus there's parking right there existing by the, you know, just east of the six units that we're looking to remove.
I presume that staff is gonna review this at some point and make recommendations with respect to them, and so it will be subject to that because.
Right.
Yes.
And the final site plan with the additional parking is gonna come back to me too.
Okay, very good.
And then in plan review, they'll make sure there are forty spaces. Are, exact, and throughout.
Yes.
Okay. And I support your going to point seven-five too, and I respect the comments again from fire, just from my observation of visiting friends and family in townhome communities, park, believe that parking is indeed an issue for these communities. And I've never seen a community too that's never had a driveway for a townhome. And I, I can only begin to just imagine what parking is gonna be like for this community. But again, for communities that I've been to that have had driveways with two-car parking garages, I've always seen parallel parking along the community.
Well, he does have parking, he doesn't have enough right now with the point seven-five, but you will.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other?
Yes. Show me the runway. Show me the, show me the runway on the map. GIS map.
We'd, we'd have to go to.
I've got it, I've got it.
You know, I remember one time I was on a promotion board, then the board was being directed by a colonel. And at that time, I was substantially lower than this colonel, but they were numerous in the same sheet. And we, we voted against this colonel, I'll never forget this. He gave a very impassioned argument as to why, you know, we should vote for a certain person, and none of us agreed on it. So at the end of this discussion, he stood up, looked at us, and stuck his tongue out at us. Well, I won't do that here. But I feel like the Lone Ranger here because. Dana, is this, is this zoning supported by the joint land agreement with the Dobbins?
Dana, I have copies of the air installation compatible use zones from the two thousand and eleven study. So they're not real clear, I pulled them offline yesterday, but.
Mr. Chairman, there are really two different components as it relates to a development activity within proximity to the base. There are what we call our, our compatible use zones, which is the clear zones and then APZ one and APZ two. Those particular sections deal with the use intensity of developments occurring within the direct flight paths of the runway. Those are the areas where if it's not likely the plane would crash, however, those APZs are based on statistical evidence where if one were to occur, those would be the areas where it may occur.
Okay.
This particular property is south of any of the clear zones or APZ zones.
Okay.
So it would not be contained in part of it, and I'll put this up on the screen in just a second.
That's good, it's a good map.
There is a, there is, to go along with that, there are also noise contours that go along with the APZ. And the noise contours, this particular property is just inside one of the noise contours. And basically the way this was established, that was a noise contour, and this one's the APZ. Basically, the way that these were established is looking at the entire arsenal of the Air Force. If fighter jets were brought over to Dobbins Air Reserve Base, what would the noise profile be? Because those are the ones that have the most impact on noise compared to what is currently operating there, which is, which is a less intense noise intensity level aircraft. So what I'm saying is.
When it comes to jets, there are no low-intensity noise aircraft.
So, so what I'm saying is, the current mission of the base is probably not going to be as impactful of this development unless the mission changes and different aircraft are coming in, which would then accompany that larger noise profile, sir.
Okay, so on the map here, who's got the pointer to the map here? That area, whoops, nope, you're, you're fine, see that map there? The development is in that bubble that's to the southwest of the, yeah, there you go, it's in there somewhere, right?
Right there, that little blue dot, sir, is the development. That blue line here, that is the noise profile that we're talking about.
So it's right on the line of that?
Yes, sir.
All right, here, here's, here's my only concern. Sorry.
I'm on the wrong blue dot.
It's right there.
It's right there, okay.
So it's just outside of the noise profile, I'm sorry, I looked at this, I looked at this quickly and thought that blue dot bubble represented the development, I apologize.
Okay, I get, so all I'm, my only concern is, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, you know, fifty townhomes with people in there. And what I don't want to have is them calling Dobbins at ten o'clock at night saying, what's with all the noise over there when they're doing their, their operations? And I'm just saying that from personal experience, I've been on the end of those phone calls where nowhere in any of the documents that they'll be signing, is there, well, there probably an advisory about them being in size and ACUs.
Sure, in a second.
I just want to say that, you know, I've, I've been in, I've been in this, been in this world long enough to know that they're gonna be next to an airport, and there's gonna be noise issues. And it's involving noise issues of all the US Air Force. And it's just amazing how people defend our country except when it comes to the fact that ten o'clock at night is interrupting their sleep. And it'd be nice to make sure that the people who rent these wonderful apartments, and they're gonna be terrific townhomes, don't get me, don't get me wrong, are, purchase these townhomes, are aware of the fact that they're next to a US Air Force base that does night operations.
Well, that's why, that's for the, for it to be on their.
That's all I'm saying.
Deed restriction, a notice that they're in an industrial.
Well, the heck with the industrial.
And, well.
The heck with the industrial, all right? I, I'm more concerned about the noises from the airplanes at night.
Yes, and, and Commissioner, I have no problem putting in, in the HOA docs and the deed restrictions that, that puts the homeowner on notice.
Okay.
I would also offer to this commission, we have used this in the past, special, when, when we've built close, close to roads and streets and things like that, to use a special, it's almost a triple pane window that does significantly reduce the noise. So I don't mind putting in, in the zoning steps that in all bedroom windows, we will put special windows that would reduce noise.
Okay, my concern is that when that F-22 makes a left turn to go downwind, all right? And he's got, he's hung out with flaps and gear, he'll be making significant noise even at a thousand feet.
I, I live just behind Rays on the River in Sandy Springs, I have to duck when the C-130s come in. That's, that's how low they are and, and how loud, so I'm, I'm well aware of the noise at ten o'clock on a Friday night.
Okay, Commissioner Ott.
All right, could we have the noise thing back up there, David? I, I, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with you, but I think that these boundaries are misleading.
Whoops.
Okay? If you look to the northeast or the upper, to the right of the, David, do you see where, you can point out where Wildwood is, you know, the three buildings?
Well, it's over here in the.
Right.
There you go.
Go down a little bit.
Right.
Okay, you see the triangular road, that's Delt Road and Terrell Mill.
Right.
All right, my neighborhood is right to the right of that, up, David. I will tell you that this noise is more ground-based noise than it is air-based noise. Because where the planes fly, they fly over my house. I can tell you where the F-22 does its final turn, I can tell you where the C-130 turns, and I can tell you when the Navy comes in and does their carrier ops. This noise is more, I think, ground-based than it is air-based. Because it is, it is way tighter than the traffic pattern that the planes fly. And, and I know that by experience because I watch the C-130s fly over my house, okay? And my house is way outside of the, the reddish line. And I will tell you that, yeah, right up there, David. Nope, down, to your right. Yeah, whatever, okay, so it's almost to the right of the picture. Right, but, so I, I, I appreciate what the chairman's saying, and I appreciate what Venture Homes is willing to do, but I, I think, and if you look at this, the, the red one is from nineteen ninety-eight. Okay, and the blue one is two thousand and eleven. So Dana, have, we do not have more current? Because a lot of this noise is based from the planes that used to be based at Dobbins.
That, this was the most recent that I could find, after the two thousand and five.
Right, so, I mean, so basically what's based there now, and even with the, the current planes that come in here. This is really not.
That is the most recent that we have in coordination with Dobbins.
All right, I'm just saying, like, when those four F-18s for the flyover for the opening night of Braves Stadium came into Dobbins and made their break, I was impressed, so.
That's because you flew a helicopter.
I just, I just, I'm just looking, looking out for the man on the ground.
No, and I appreciate that, but I just, I think that the actual flight paths.
Okay, all right.
Do you want to add the step of the notice for Dobbins?
Yeah, I think we should, all right, could we do that?
I would gladly make that item number twenty-eight, put in the documents, you know, proximity to the air, airbase and the noise cone corridor, et cetera.
To be advised in the, all right, because it's. I'm more worried about that captain taking that phone call, all right, than the man making the call. I haven't been there too. So anyway, I'm, I'm, that's all my comments, thank you. Any, any more comments? We have a motion, we have a second, then we're gonna call a question. And the pass is five to zero.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'll, I'll be looking for those teachers and those policemen to be moving in there, okay?
That's a deal.
Okay, thank you very much, good presentation. Why don't we take a short break? How about ten minutes, everybody, come back, move before eleven? All right, we're back in session here, and we have some Boy Scouts here that are working on a citizenship merit badge. And they have some questions for Commissioner Merle that I'd like them to come up and ask.
Come on, they're usually tough questions.
Set up today I didn't know about.
They're usually tough questions, I'd get ready for you.
You'll notice the fear of their footstep here.
I love Boy Scouts, come on up here.
There you go.
Here.
Right there is fine, you bet. Now, I need to have your name and where you live, okay?
Okay, my name is Jack Barbado, and I live in Atlanta, Georgia, I'm with Troop Ten Eleven.
And you're a first-class scout?
Yes.
Okay, and the other gentleman?
My name's Sergeant Joseph, I live in Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay, and you're also a first-class scout? Okay, great, okay, so what's your first question?
My question is, why is there a required?
You guys step up to the microphone, there you go.
My question is, why is there a required forty-foot buffer in between properties or residential homes?
That's a great question for Commissioner Merle, and she, she's gonna jump right on it.
I had that same question.
That's our code, and that's what's required for that category of zoning when it backs up to single-family houses.
Let's give people some space so they can, you know, sit in their backyard and barbecue or do things. But if you had them, if you had them closer than that, like they do sometimes in other states, it's inconvenient to people and they get it, you know, they interfere with others' lifestyle. But a great, but a great question.
Very good, thank you.
Next question.
That should have been for John Peterson.
What is an impervious surface?
That's one for Ott. Let Ott in.
All right.
Here you go.
So Sergeant, in your backyard, where you don't have anything like sidewalks or, or decks or anything like that, the water can go into the ground, that's pervious. When you put either a driveway or a house or something like that where water can't pass through to the ground, then that's impervious. And so every zoning category has a limit for the amount of impervious.
And that's because when it rains real hard, if you have impervious surface, the water pools somewhere, sometimes can cause flooding. And no, so that's why it's so important, when you go down the street, you see all the access to the underground stormwater, that those are cleared. Otherwise, if they're not, then the water pools and floods the area. So it's very, very important that we don't have too much impervious surface. Because, you know, if you have a really good rain, next thing you know, you'll be walking in two feet of water. So.
And so you guys are both gonna be starved by the next Court of Honor, right?
Probably.
Rod your hat, yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks, guys, thanks for coming today, appreciate you being involved in your government, keep up the good work. All right, now with that, I believe we have a resolution to OB twenty-seven.
Yes, I'll go ahead and call that back. Other business item number twenty-seven is to consider amending the stipulations for Majid Satudeh regarding rezoning application Z five of two thousand and six. The property is located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, south of Wellington Lane, and then on seven fifty-three of the sixteenth district. The applicant is here, Mr. Chairman, and also the opposition is here, and I believe they've come to an agreement.
They have, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna kind of go through this. So the, the main issue that the opposition had was, uh, just called light pollution from the existing houses that, that Shia and her family have to deal with. So we've kind of come to some agreements on that. There were also some conditions that East Coast Civic Association asked to include. And Mr. Majid just, I'm just gonna read him if there's a problem, then you can come up. The first one is that the removal of the existing basketball court. The second one will be that you do not commit in for any variances on setbacks or impervious surface. And then the third one will be that the district commissioner will approve the final house elevations and plans. So that deals with their concerns. And as for the opposition, there's two conditions that they've come to terms on. The first one is all the exterior lighting across the back of these houses will be placed on motion sensors such that the exterior lighting is activated only when someone approaches, and downward directing light shields will be installed directing and containing light emissions to the applicant's property. And now, Mr. Majid, you're not the owner of the existing house, correct? But you've agreed to work with that owner in putting these conditions in place, or trying to get these conditions in place on that house in addition to the houses you're gonna build, correct? Yes?
As far as, uh, the lighting, you know, I can talk to the owner regarding the issue, uh, you know, leave the lighting out, but as far as removing the basketball court, I don't, I don't have authority to, uh, to agree on that.
So the basketball court is not where you're gonna be building the houses?
Uh, I mean, the basketball court, if the new house are gonna be built, that's, eventually they're gonna be demolished, yes, sir.
The basketball court will be?
Yes.
Right, okay, so, um, prior to getting the permit to build the new house, then you're gonna have to remove the basketball court.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay, alright. Um, and then the, uh, the second issue deals with interior lighting, which, as I explained to the opposition, there really is no way for the county to enforce that. So, um, the condition that I'm gonna put on is that the applicant, prior to getting the land disturbance permit, will meet with the county arborist and come up with a visual screening plan or buffer. Um, and absent the ability to do that, then the applicant will meet with county staff and myself to come up with some sort of physical barrier, um, with final approval of either the landscaping, screening, or the physical screening to be approved by the district commissioner. Does that address your concerns? Okay.
Where is the opposition?
Um, your house is, ma'am, can you come up, please? Can you just show where your house is? You might have to talk to the gentleman behind you.
So the street you're seeing here is Johnson Ferry, the structure that you see, point to the roof here, the structure that you see is 1996 Johnson Ferry, my property is immediately adjacent behind, yes.
The one right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve other business item 27, with the conditions that I just added, all other staff comments and stipulations remain in effect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, may for a discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you for working with us, I appreciate that, both of you, thank you very much. Alright, John, back to the regular agenda?
Yes, sir. Res zoning case Z26, Greenworks LLC requests rezoning from R20 to RSL for the purpose of residential senior living, non-supportive, and landlot 173 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north, on the southwest corner of Beres Barrett Parkway and Villarica Road. The applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z26, please raise your hands? Let's direct, so there's three people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay.
Alright, good morning, my name is Kelly Morton, and I'm here representing Greenworks LLC in this rezoning application for an RSL development of 21 lots on 6.82 acres. The original application was designed with 26 lots, um, then the developer has redesigned the proposed site down to 21 lots. There are no variances requested. If approved at 3.07 units per acre, this would be the lowest-density RSL located on Barrett Parkway. This property has been in the Pace family for over 120 years. The owner's immediate family own the seven adjacent properties located on the land use map here, outlined in red. The proposed site is located on the corner of Barrett Parkway and Villarica Road. There is a traffic light already located at this intersection, and a roundabout located at the corner of Irwin Road and Villarica Road. While this property is zoned R20, it is surrounded by R15, R20, and R20 OSC. The surrounding developments range in density from 1.2 to 2.15 units per acre. There is a RSL community on Barrett Parkway that's approximately one-half mile from this proposed property. It was developed at 3.53 units per acre in 2011, and that's Cobblestone Ridge. There are currently two new RSL developments being built right now on Barrett Parkway, approximately 1.2 to 1.5 miles from this property. Barrett Preserve was approved at 3.6 units per acre. Battle Park was approved at 3.5 units per acre. Right now Cobb County has the largest growing aging population. Aging couples that have lived in Cobb County want to remain in Cobb County, close to their family, friends, and familiar places. To accommodate the aging couples is through an RSL development. The land use plan for this proposed site allows up for 2.5 units per acre. However, the RSL zoning code states that RSLs are designed to be located in any land use category, other than industrial, rural, residential, or very-low-density residential. The code also states that a maximum density of five units per acre. However, the density could be reduced due to topography, drainage, deforestation, or erosion concerns. This property has no issues that would require the density to be reduced. In fact, it's got many attributes that would support a much higher density within what this developer is requesting. The proposed site plan does not require any variances. It is located on Barrett Parkway, which is a large four-lane roadway that is equipped to handle much larger developments. The proposed development would produce a high-quality age-restricted product of 21 lots, all architectural styled exteriors, as noted in the stipulations. The impact on traffic, roads, and schools are very different with RSL communities, the impact being dramatically less than a single-family home development. There have been many traffic studies conducted in relation to RSLs versus single-family home communities. The studies have shown that RSLs have significantly less traffic impact, with RSLs having 3.48 trips per home per day, and single-family home having 10.4 trips per home per day. In addition, the studies have also shown that RSL trips of older drivers are predominantly made outside of rush hour traffic hours. You may hear today from Cobb County School Board, or the People Looking After Neighborhoods, regarding the concerns about a negative impact on school tax revenue. The senior exemption has been in effect since December of 1978, and has no different outcome on school tax revenue if this development would be, is zoned RSL. In fact, there's a positive impact for schools. On this spreadsheet, uh, that I prepared, the eighteen up to sixty-two years of age paying the school tax revenue, sixty-two and up is eligible for the senior exemption. If you look at the example, Sally is fifty-five years old and lives in an R20, she pays school tax. If Sally lives in a fifty-five, is fifty-five years old and lives in an RSL, she's still paying school tax. If Billy is sixty-two and lives in an R20, he's not paying school tax. If Billy is sixty-two and lives in an RSL, he's still not paying school tax. The benefit of an RSL to the school district is that the resident that is aged fifty-five to sixty-two is still paying school taxes for those seven years without burdening the schools with children due to the age-restricted community guidelines. The next will show you the school zone for this proposed property. All three schools are overcapacity, the middle school being at 133.27%. If the developer builds an R20 subdivision, it has the potential of dumping twenty-six to forty new students on an already overcrowded school system. And if we add that scenario up here, the school board would still be up here opposing us, saying that the schools are overcrowded. Some of the other concerns that you'll hear from the People Looking After Neighborhoods is at the intersection of Barrett Parkway, and Villarica Road already has traffic challenges. The developer is installing a deceleration lane along Villarica Road, and with an RSL, it generates less traffic than an R20 subdivision would. Another concern, uh, from Ms. Gamble was addressing the twenty-five-foot setback buffer along Barrett Parkway. The county was deeded a twenty-five-foot right-of-way easement in 1999 by this homeowner for drainage and expansion. In addition to that twenty-five-foot easement, the developer is placing a twenty-five-foot buffer for a total of fifty foot from Barrett Parkway. A concern about the buffer going from thirty-five to thirty, the county code in subsection 11T requires a thirty-foot, thirty-foot setback adjacent to all residential properties and a twenty-foot setback adjacent to the roadway. Another concern was that sewer was only located in Lakefield Manor. Sewer is actually available at the intersection of Irwin Road and Villarica Road. The current R20 zoning would yield approximately thirteen lots, so the recommended density of fifteen to seventeen RSL lots is really not reasonable. When factoring in the cost of the land, the cost of the sewer to be brought, and the county's requirements, turning lane sidewalks, covering utter landscape buffer, fencing, et cetera, the developer has already redesigned this proposed plan from twenty-six to twenty-one lots that would have an overall density of 3.07 units per acre, which is ideal for this location and lower than what the code would allow. We would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve this rezoning application from an R20 to an RSL with twenty-one lots. Thank you.
Good morning again, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dennis Campbell. For the record, I represent the Cobb County School District. Um, I've been here before to represent, uh, the school district with their concerns about this particular kind of development, in that it does, um, cause us to have a loss of tax revenue, um, that might otherwise be there if this were standard residential development. I want to point out for sure that the Cobb County School District is not against seniors, is not against senior development, um, in particular, it's just these kinds of senior living developments that are coming in that are new. We don't wish to change any senior exemption rules or regulations, um, they're there, and we understand that, but we would like to put a cork in it, so to speak, and stop the, um, revenue loss from continuing to happen. So we would appreciate if you would consider those concerns. I'd also like to, um, respond a little bit to some comments that have been made about the district having it both ways, the idea that we don't want senior development, but we also don't want residential development that bring kids to schools. Well, that's not true. We're here often, and sometimes we object to development that is particularly dense. When it is significantly dense, very much like the Venture Homes development that we just talked about a few minutes ago, or when you're going from something like R30 to R20 OSC, or R40 to R30 or R15, we're significantly in, in increasing those densities, and those line up with a school that is overcrowded, which isn't always the case, then we have a concern. That certainly doesn't bring us to you all the time or every time, and allows you to say you can reduce those densities. In fact, we're very appreciative of the Planning Commission when in fact they do just that. They look at these densities very often, and ask that they be reduced, and the developers do reduce those, and you sometimes approve those as reduced, uh, density developments, and we're very thankful for that, and very appreciative of that. With regard to a couple statements that were just made, um, if this were R20, we disagree with what was said about twenty-six to forty students, um, being generated out of that kind of development. We understand this development would have maybe a dozen or thirteen homes that could be developed in R20 in that space, so you probably have eight to nine students total. And of those schools that were mentioned as being overcrowded, we have reported to you, I think, and I'll say this again, two of those schools, Loving Good and Hill Grove, are going to be addressed with lost funding, so they're not really a concern for us, uh, even if it was developed as residential. It'd only be Chatham Hill, and it'd be a very small number of students, and we wouldn't object to that. So I just wanted to make those points clear, and thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that and addressing
Good morning, my name is Kelly Gamble, and I'm president of People Looking After Neighborhoods. The 2030 comp plan notes the loss of rural character in West Cobb. The applicant sits on, the application sits at the intersection, yet is two-tenths of a mile from very-low-density residential in an area known as McKeachran Farms. Many enjoy the drive through this area, as it is mostly open land with rolling hills and pastures. The land use plan and code are the only defense we have pertaining to the character of our area. Development has resulted, schools are overcrowded, and infrastructure lacking. This is reality. Yet we continue to deflect on issues and look for justification based on attacks and assumptions. Comments by the Planning Commission on July 6th range from impact on schools, improving sewer accessibility, RSLs are good transitions from lower density to higher, fewer car trips, less intense use for an intersection, and the way the surrounding area is developed. The parcels adjacent to this application to the north and south are not developed subdivisions, but single-family estate-type lots. This is what has been desirable and expected in West Cobb. Development to the east is Chatham Hill Farms at .206, and estates at Lakefield Manor at 1.5 UPA. To the west in VLDR is Addys Pond at 1.2, 1.32, Paces Farm at 1.69, and Chesterfield at 1.83. DOT staff noted a decelerating lane is required, but has not yet addressed a left-turn lane into the development. Turning left from Villarica into this development will cause a traffic backup onto Villarica to Barrett Parkway. With the left-turn lane not being on the site plan, and even though staff comments are, um, included in the motion, will this be considered? Per staff, sewer is not available onsite, and an off-site easement will be required. The approximate distance is 900 feet. However, staff also noted that if the elevation allows, this issue was deflected and will not be addressed until site plan review. Yet if sewer is not feasible, the resulting development, per county code, is in conflict with the site plan as presented today. Item number six in the letter of stipulations addresses the creation of the mandatory HOA, which will be responsible for maintaining and upkeep of fencing, landscaping, open-space areas, the clubhouse, the entrance to the community signage, lighting, if the streets are private, and irrigation. Section 11086 of the Cobb County Code addresses private streets. Quote, "All private streets shall be indicated with a blue post-mounted street sign consistent with county street sign standards." The RSLs that the county has approved contain these blue signs, indicating that the roads are private. Yet questions arise if those who are typically on fixed incomes know they are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep, as it is not addressed in the HOA covenants. While the county does not enforce covenants, it is disingenuous to promote senior living with the unknown burden of responsibility to maintain infrastructure within. The RSL code is in conflict with the land use plan. Stating seniors have less impact on a community is justification for what would otherwise be known as infill development. Seniors have resided throughout Cobb County for decades. We are not diminishing the desire for homes that have easy living standards. However, the community at large has residents that are under 55 that also desire these types of homes. It is not about opposing RSLs, but as a community, we need to manage and appropriate what we have in a manner that will continue to help the county remain what we have become, without targeting or justification. For the benefit of a senior For the benefit of a senior community, do we not, because of code, place an additional unforeseen burden on them as well? We respectfully ask that you consider that in your decision today and deny this application.
Hi, I'm Katie Kline, and I am here on behalf of Sandtown Park Subdivision HOA. Show it to me on the map. Yeah, it's right there. So we are a small subdivision of 24 homes located on Villa Rica Road across from Irwin Road. We're the closest subdivision to the proposed development, and we stand to be impacted greatly by its presence. We understand that RSLs typically have less of an impact on traffic, but it is an impact nonetheless. Villa Rica Road between Barrett Parkway and the traffic circle at West Sandtown Road is already very congested at peak times. Residents attempting to leave our subdivision and drivers attempting to turn left from Irwin Road onto Villa Rica have to wait for extended periods of time. Drivers take chances to get out. Impatient drivers use the deceleration lane into our neighborhood to go around people trying to turn left onto Irwin Road. Motorists ignore the traffic laws such as speed limits and right-of-way, and oftentimes in order to turn left out of my neighborhood, I have to turn right, go around the roundabout, and continue on my way. This is all occurring while vehicles are traveling at a very fast rate of speed as they approach or leave the traffic circle. There have been 35 traffic accidents in the past three years along Villa Rica Road at the intersections of Barrett Parkway, Irwin Road, and West Sandtown. The traffic conditions are only getting worse, and the accidents will only increase. Our homeowners association has previously requested that measures be taken to reduce these issues, but the situation has been ignored and left to get worse. There have been studies done that say RSLs generate one-third less traffic during peak times. However, by this development having a higher density than the surrounding area, you've almost negated the anticipated less traffic and just shifted it when the congestion will occur. We support the Planning Commission recommendation of 15 homes, but would respectfully ask that only 12 homes be allowed in order to keep more with the character of the area. We also respectfully ask you to take meaningful measures in conjunction with this development to offset the additional adverse impact on the traffic that this development will no doubt have on Villa Rica Road. Thank you for your time.
Chris Webber?
Thank you. Is that everyone, Joe?
Hi, Brett.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
You have 30 seconds.
I have 30 seconds left? Okay. I move to let Commissioner Burl make my recommendations.
She just said it was okay.
Oh, she did, okay. Thank you, and I certainly respect all the comments. I think one of the things that we seem to tend to forget, and when we get into RSLs, I know that there seems to be a lot of these coming up lately, and I, again, the comments we had at the last meeting from others, including Plan and former Commissioner Goram, where we were talking about possibly relooking at this code one more time, and so I've asked the staff to come in and take a look at it and see if there's anything we could tweak on this. We did tweak it down to four units per acre as the maximum, and all the things that have been said about traffic is true. The fact is that there is less traffic, but some of my concerns are that everyone seems to think, and I've gotten emails about wheelchairs and all sorts of things, it's because it's an active adult. I don't think everybody all of a sudden quits working at 55 or gets in wheelchairs and rolls down Barrett Parkway. So the misconception is certainly this particular unit is 55 to 62, they will pay school taxes, but this unit would require that they do not have any children in school under the age of 19. That's one of the requirements in the HOA and as far as federal law is concerned. So I think that that is something that we need to take in concern, and there would be no impact on the schools, and there would be people in here paying taxes. One of the other things that is a misconception is that when you buy a home, unless you buy it on January 1st, you will pay taxes for that first year until it's reappraised and you apply for the exemption. So you will have at least a year, most likely, of everyone in here paying school taxes, so no matter what your age. So, you know, those are things that are somewhat of a misconception, that everybody's in a wheelchair and nobody pays school taxes, and that's not the case. I think to Ms. Gamble's point is there are a lot of seniors that probably want, or they're not seniors, that want a yard. So, and these homes are certainly nice homes. Going back through the density, as an R20, somewhere between 11 and 13 homes could be built, which is up to 1.9 units per acre. Planning and zoning recommended 15, which is approximately 2.2. Applicant originally requested 26, which is 3.8. Staff recommended 17, which is 2.5. So there's a whole variety of issues here. This property is completely surrounded by, if I understand it, family and all of the neighbors behind it and beside it, all of the same family, and it's their property they're wishing to sell. I would like, is someone here from DOT? Some comments were made regarding DOT comments about left turn. Is that something that DOT is recommending, or is that something that we would require?
This development is under our threshold for left-turn lane. Our threshold starts at 30 units, and so even at the level it is at right now, at 21, it is under the threshold that we would typically require for that. We did an initial review with traffic operations and signals, and they did not indicate that they thought there would be any problem with not having a left-turn lane at that location. Since that's been brought up as a concern from the local residents, we already have a note to take that back and make sure that they're aware that that's a local concern, and we can catch that again in plan review if they revise that.
So if they, so DOT is not recommending a left turn?
At this point, we are not recommending a left-turn lane there. It's very close to the intersection, so there will be some geometric concerns in trying to put a left-turn lane in there. There's a dual left-turn lane, I believe, at the intersection. So basically, when you have back-to-back left-turn lanes like that, that's geometrically difficult. So, yeah, you see in there. But that doesn't mean impossible, but it would be difficult. The real issue of why it wasn't recommended has to do with the size of the development, that there's not much traffic, and so it was not put in. But given the concern, I plan to speak again to signals and traffic operations.
You plan to do what? I'm sorry.
Speak again to our signals and our traffic operations group.
But in DOT's opinion, it's not warranted to have one because of?
Because of the size of the development.
And therefore, the less traffic that would be there.
Correct.
What about the concerns of the HOA up there about the roundabout and backing up there? We looked at, I don't recall anything being asked about that. Has DOT received any comments or requests regarding that intersection as far as traffic backing up and blocking entrances to that particular subdivision?
Not to my knowledge, no.
If you would, when we get done, get with the lady with HOA and make sure that we take a look at her concerns, that any of those are there, whether this goes through or not, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, but I think it still has to be pointed, this is a level-D road.
Correct.
So that means it's pretty heavily traveled.
Correct. It's a major collector and a level-D.
Yeah, so I get this is government, you know, we're trying to balance things out, but I, what was the name of the lady who was the last, made the last of comments? From the HOH? Yeah, what, I'm sorry? Edie?
Katie.
Katie. I, I, I sure where she's coming from, that during rush hour, morning and afternoon, it might be level A between 10 and 3, but between those other hours during dinnertime and breakfast, her concerns on a level-D road trying to make a left turn, I think are very valid. And I get your point about that the development doesn't have enough houses to warrant a left-turn lane, but I think the reality is, is what you talked about, there is a backup there, and it does, it will impact on Ernest Barrett and Villa Rica in both directions during the rush hours. So I think Commissioner Webber is right on, right spot on here. We need to be talking to her HOA about these issues, because I think that this will impact traffic with one more, one more set of houses, and particularly involving a left-turn lane where there is no left-turn lane. So you in fact have the reality of backing traffic up to Barrett Parkway and jamming it up there. I think that's a, I think that's a realistic view of the real world out there. Sure.
I would just like to add to that. I think, and Chairman, you know this because we've had discussions on some things in East Cobb, I think we need to have a work session with DOT to talk about these warrants. The warrants are not etched in stone. The more questions we ask, we find out that they are recommendations, and my understanding is that as long as doing something that is not warranted does not create a greater safety concern, that there's not a problem with doing it. And so I think that as a board, I would like to have DOT come and do a presentation to this board about the manual and the warrants and how that all works and how they use them.
I totally agree, especially signalization, that's where we run into.
If I can address that, some things are warranted and based on national standards, such as signals. When I talk about left-turn lanes, we have guidelines based on like the 30 lots, that's a, that's a county standard, that so we judge every development fairly, you know, so we're not looking at one development and we hold them to a different standard than another county, another development.
See, that exactly makes my point. They use the word warrant. You use the word warrant as you described, but then we use the word warrant for signalization, and as far as this board knows, we're talking the same thing, but, you know, now we find out, and that's why I think we really need to have that discussion.
The reality is, is the warrants have to apply to the circumstances. If you have a level-D or level-E road, even though the development standard doesn't meet warrant of traffic, right?
The situation does, yeah.
The situation does. So I think that, I think Commissioner Ott and the rest is are right on the mark here. This, you know, she seems like a personal, personally reasonable young lady with, with very definite concerns based on experience. We as Commissioners are seeing that here, that as development comes, regardless of whether you have zoned or not, we're going to have increased traffic. We only have, we have a lot of two-lane roads, and these, these just keep popping up here where they keep telling us that you're backing traffic up and your standards don't reflect the real world. So I think we need to be looking at this. I think this is one situation where, you know, we, we sometimes create bad comments about our government because not responsive to the reality of the situation. I think this is one of those where that's at. So I'll take Commissioner Ott's recommendation on board here, and we'll work on that, because I think we need to be looking very carefully here as the county changes because of the growth. We're not helping you out either, because you're standing up here defending the standard when we're saying the standard doesn't apply in every situation because of the nature of the development and, and the nature of the road too, okay?
Correct.
Would it be, would it be a problem putting in a left-turn lane in this development?
It would be something I would wish to discuss with those two departments I talk to, because, because of the closeness of the signal, depending on how it was put in geometrically, it could be a problem. I don't, it would take some looking at.
Sure. Well, you're, you're looking at the diagram, you'd certainly want to have that, that left-turn lane back towards the end of the development rather than closer back to the left-turn lanes on, yeah. Okay, all right. Commissioner Burl, I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment, since Commissioner Ott is the liaison commissioner for DOT, I think it is a good idea to have a work session. But we also, in the past, when I've tried to require a left-turn lane in or, or decel lane or whatever, doesn't, I know that there's state requirements too for signals and, and national standards and all as well, but isn't that addressed as well in plan review?
Correct. If it's not required as a stipulation, we will sometimes get some pushback in plan review, but we also look at those things in plan review and will require them, yes. And if things aren't safe, then we will restrict access and do things like that in plan review.
Okay.
Thanks.
Let me ask, I'm assuming we're not, we don't allow any ride-in, ride-outs off Barrett either, do we?
Barrett Parkway is a specific case where we don't allow new access points off of it.
Okay.
And yet, and yet it's a four-lane road. Yet we're saying for this two-lane road.
It has to do with the amount of traffic it carries and what it serves for the county.
Excuse me, Chairman. My observation seems to, there seems to be a deference towards getting cars through and not necessarily towards how you integrate other aspects of transportation. And so by not putting in cuts on Barrett Parkway, you will be supporting throughput of cars on Barrett Parkway and not, you know, interfering with that, but it doesn't take into account any of the new, other nuances with respect to.
Exactly, and I couldn't agree with you more. And that's what I'm saying, is that we need to be looking, we need to be looking at the fact that we have these great arterials, but these two-lane roads are becoming, are being used like arterials because of development on them. They don't have the same degree of, of, sorry? Or cut-throughs, right. So I, I think, you get what we're talking about here.
Certainly.
But it's up to the board here to help you, to give you, to give you some guidance.
Let me ask one other quick question. So we don't allow any ride-ins or ride-outs or anything on Barrett Parkway in this particular area?
That is my understanding from working with plan review.
With who?
Plan review.
I think part of that was when Barrett Parkway and the East West Connector and those were put in place, it was supposed to be a limited access roadway, and the one, the folks that have access, it was kind of agreed upon when it first went in place. So I think that's where DOT kind of comes from.
But there are some on there.
While they were grandfathered in, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm confused on a much higher level. I really appreciate that. Anybody have more comments, and then I'll make a motion, or you want to make a motion?
She has a question.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Let, let her, let her make the motion, all right, and then we'll second it, and then we'll have the discussion. How's that? So you're ready to make the motion?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve Z26, subject to the stipulation letter from Kelly Morton dated 6/27, and all staff comments not otherwise in conflict with above-referenced stipulation letter. Any and all stipulations must be approved by district commissioner staff designate. I'd also like to add a number nine to that stipulation letter that will read, privacy fence to surround the entire property, landscaping to be approved by the county arborist, three-foot dirt burn to be placed along Villa Rica Road and Ernest Barrett Parkway, not to interfere with Cobb DOT right-of-way for future expansion, and at a maximum density of 2.9, which would give 20 homes. Number 10 would be to get with DOT, and if possible, bear the burden and cost of a left-turn lane into the development.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second, and I'll start with Commissioner Ott for comments.
First off, I just want to say to Ms. Morton, everybody else that applies for RSLs probably needs to hire you, because that was probably one of the better presentations that we've had. With that said, I just, no, no, I mean, and it has nothing to do with what you said, but I just want you to know that I was impressed with the presentation. Ms. Chairman, you have mentioned this before, I see no reason to go above 2.5 on this other than whatever the price is being asked for the land. So I can't support it. I mean, I think it's a great product. I don't have a problem with location, you know, we've talked about schools, I just, I do not see a reason to go above 2.5. And my concern is that there's a whole lot of underdeveloped land around it, and my concern is going above the 2.5 that the land use map has is just the wrong way to go.
Not to, I'm sorry, not to let anything out of the barrel, but all of that particular area is some land being considered for parks surrounding it.
Okay. Commissioner Burl?
Hi, okay. Okay, in the book, we've got 26 units at 3.81 units per acre. In the book, we've got 26 units at 3.81 units per acre. And then I, is that reduced to 21 or 20 units?
20.
What, you said 20 in your motion.
Correct. I reduced it to 20, yes.
Okay. So.
Which is 2.9.
And they're not attached according to the site plan.
2.93.
Okay. So it's at 2.9 units per acre?
2.93, yeah.
Okay. And for LDR, we're at 2.5, but because it's RSL, you've got a density bonus, I guess. But I, I see where Commissioner Ott's going to as far as the surrounding property, but, you know, that's the density bonus with RSL.
There is no density bonus.
It's allowed.
Well, I mean, it's allowed up to five units per acre. Right. I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The four units per acre is with the minimum 10 acres is for a collector road.
Correct. Okay. You're correct.
And these are both arterials, so they're.
Cut it by two thirds, basically.
Okay. I just want to clarify the units per acre with the 20 or 21.
I'm just still crunching some numbers over here.
Okay. While, while you're doing that, I'll go ahead and make my comments. First, staff recommendations. A, it is staff's opinion that the applicant's rezoning proposal will not permit a use that is suitable in view of the use in redevelopment adjacent nearby properties for a large lot, single family detached houses. The RSL code requires overall residential developments to be compatible with neighboring residential uses. Paragraph B, it is the staff's opinion that the applicant's rezoning proposal will have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby property. Whether properties in this area are developed with larger single family lots and subdivision of lower densities, the proposal will be out of character with adjoining rural, large rural lots. C, it is the staff's opinion that the applicant's rezoning proposal result in a use which would cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation, facilities and utilities. The Cobb County Board of Education is concerned that this proposal will have a negative impact on tax revenue for the Cobb County School District. So in the first three, so in the first three paragraphs, we have staff clearly indicating there's a problem with this one. And yet I go all the way down to the bottom and we have, based on the above analysis, staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions.
It's pretty standard, dude.
I, I don't, I don't know what's going on here, but I just, I've said this before and I'm going to say it again. It is the job of the staff to support the ordinances and not try to find ways around them. You can't possibly start out this, 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 the staff recommendation with three strong negatives and come out with an approval. So can someone tell me what's going on here?
Mr. Chairman, can I address your questions or concerns?
You, you have, you have the floor.
All right. When, when the staff puts together this recommendation, it's based on a site plan that was submitted. If you look at the original site plan that was submitted, it was almost at four units per acre for the density. A, B and C, look at that snapshot in time of that original plan of four, almost 3.8 units per acre for the original plan. So we went through here, uh, doing an analysis of those three points and the other two points. And by the time we finished our analysis, at the bottom where it is approval, it's not for 3.8, it's not for 2.9, it's not for 2, 2. whatever. It's, it's for 2.5, which is the maximum density in the comprehensive plan. You know, it's not a matter of going around the codes. You know, we're, we're using the code exactly how it's intended to be used.
But, but it still doesn't address the fact that the recommendation C here is it's going to produce a, cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, all right? It doesn't address the fact that it will have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby properties. Those are still, all right, issues that the staff says are, are, you know, should be a reason why this should not be approved.
If it was R20, it would be the same comments, would it not?
No, because it's R20, it's already zoned that way.
Well, I know, but the comments would be the same.
But you wouldn't, we wouldn't be here if it was R20. They were coming here for an R20.
But they didn't talk.
My point is, is that all we're really doing here is we're not building an RSL community. This is just a backdoor entry to get more density by calling it an RSL. All right? And, and it goes to the point because we're going to have people in these houses who in fact still be paying taxes. So what we've done here is by labeling this RSL, we have really just found a way to get around the density issue.
This is 100% RSL, this application. There's no getting around this.
The application's for an RSL.
Correct.
What's the original zoning?
The original zoning is R20.
Is R20, that's my whole point. So all we've done here, because, you know, we, we might have older people in here, but they're still going to have the ability to, to have kids, all right?
No, they're not.
Well, 19, college, all right?
Well, that suggests Chairman do away with RSL, but this is what we're dealt and we have to play with it.
I, I get that part.
Okay.
The issue though, is that when we registered started with RSL.
Which is okay with me too.
It had, it had requirements that you had to be near, be able to walk to a store or, you know, to, you know, buy groceries or do other things that involve small errands. So we, so we took that out, all right? It's not their part of the RSL anymore, right? That's gone, right?
And I don't think that was ever really in the RSL. I think the board used that as, as their own guidelines.
But that was the purpose for the RSL.
Says who?
We were addressing a senior, an aging population. And one of the ways to get them off the road, all right, was to put them near somewhere where they could walk to it. I, I remember reading that somewhere. I mean, I know there's hundreds of pages of issues involving zoning, but the, the original purpose for an RSL was to address a population of people like me that doesn't necessarily have to drive everywhere, but you still have the capability of doing it. But the idea was to put them in a community where, you know, they could have access to amenities without necessarily having to drive around the county. So, okay. So go ahead.
And, and I think you're, you're right. But the intent, because we started with suburban condominiums, that didn't work. And we had numerous seniors come to the meetings and tell us that they did not want to have to move. They wanted to live in their neighborhood. They want to be able to go to the same pharmacy, the same grocery store, the same doctor. They did not want to have to walk. The, the whole walking part was just part of the idea that at the time, it was like they wanted everybody to walk from neighborhoods. But the, the intent was that we had requests from the community, the citizens in the county, to build them communities that they could downsize to, but stay in and around their neighborhoods. What has happened, and we've talked about this, is that it has become a density tool.
That's, that's why, that's how I see this.
Right.
This may be a question for John. At R20, what it's currently zoned, you've got, you, you're, they would be allowed 17 units?
11 to 13.
11.
11 to 13.
11 to 13.
Maybe more.
Okay. And at 2.5 units per acre under the LDR, what would the RSL number be?
It would be 17.
I went through.
And you're at 20?
Correct.
Okay. Go to 17 and you'll be in line.
Is there, is there a middle ground here? Because I, I, right now, I just, I can't support this because I just don't see this as an RSL. This is just, it's, it's, it's a great development, dresses, you know, nice houses, but it's just decreasing the density on an existing LOSD, Level of Service Road D and Barrett Parkway, which has become the, you know, the mainstream between north and south of Cobb County. So we, we have to, we have to start addressing the issue here that the, of, of density in a, in a, in a part of the world that's trying to stay sort of semi-rural. And we're just sort of adding to the density. That's my major concern is that I just don't see this as an RSL. I just see this as a way to, if you look at these OSCs over here to the right, okay?
What would R20 OSC give us, Mr. Peterson, approximately, you know?
Change that code too.
Well, I know what I'm saying is you're going to, what you're going to get is more impact on traffic with a R20, R20 OSC because of the age of the children.
Revised new code that's being proposed and considered by the board, it would, the, if an R20 OSC were considered for this property, it would be the exact threshold that's allowed under the R20 zoning.
Okay.
Which would be?
It would just be clustered in, in order to reduce the impact.
Smaller lots, but the same.
Correct.
Okay.
But how many houses would that be?
11.
11.
11 to 13.
So we're looking for is middle ground here. So.
And I'll, I'll just mention for the board, um, this is a, this is a, a decision of the elected officials. The RSL code does not set precedence on other development. Therefore.
Correct.
You have the ability, based upon the facts presented in front of you today, to make a decision based upon your best judgment of whether or not you think this meets the intention of the RSL code or does not meet the intention of the RSL code. I know that's kind of ambiguous, but I'm just letting it, kind of putting it out there that just because, just because the board has discretion as it relates to the decision that can be made today.
Okay. Commissioner Cuban?
I don't disagree with any comment that's been made here today, even those comments that oppose each other. I've seen us be flexible. I've seen us be inflexible. I've seen staff have comments that will present an argument that follows. Sometimes I've seen it and it doesn't. So I have a lot of difference on the, a lot of difference on the commissioner here. You know, this is a variation of three homes and I, I have deference to the commissioner here.
So any more, any more discussions?
Would it, would it help to hold it for 30 days to see if the, the number could be worked out to be in line with the land use?
If the board likes to make a substitute motion, they're more than willing to do such. But my motion is, stands right there. If everyone thinks it should be lower, what my concern is.
Sometimes, sometimes we, sometimes we look for a number and people are very wedded to density and it sounds a little hokey when Commissioner Weatherford says we're looking at intensity versus density. But in some respects, it is true.
It is.
And sometimes people, we get so wedded, so wedded to a particular number that, you know, who was sitting there counting and in their house thinking, wow, that neighborhood has three more homes than it should. You know, sometimes you just have to think practically about this. And it's, you know, maybe I, I take a little bit more of a broader look. Nobody, everybody seems to be opposed to the new development, but not their own development that created the burden, you know? But somehow when they moved to the area, they, they didn't help to increase it. But it's the next one, then it's the next one. And you know, I don't know, Chairman, I, I try to be as open as possible. I'm, I, in my district, I defer a lot to the community, but sometimes I also have to take into account some other, some other aspects of the development. And it produces us to be able to use our discretion as, as community development shared. And I believe that the commissioner has utilized his discretion in having them reduce the number of homes to the number that's here and, and being mindful towards those community concerns.
And the intensity versus density, I mean, if you did R20, you would have possibly, you know, three to four cars per house. And you would have maybe smaller, I mean, smaller number of houses, but you would have more intensity for traffic in this area. And it can be developed that way, so can all the area around there. To me, I was trying to find a happy ground where the intensity and the density, you know, kind of matched and met. And to me, I, I don't disagree with comments about RSLs and a way to get density. But the fact is, they, they apparently sell like hotcakes because they're everywhere. And the fact is, what we've tried to do in West Cobb is to control that. And we've never gone to five, we've never gone to four. Very few times have we gone over three and some of those were done before I was here. And most of the time I've only approved or recommended approval for less than three, usually 2.5 to three. So that was my logic here. And my suggestion was that the density would not increase more intensity as it would for a comparable R20 subdivision. So those are my logics. I would more than welcome to change the code, you know, if that's the board's intention. There needs to be something that coincides with the growth of these, with the popularity of these that meets all that. I know that we did one in Commissioner Ott's district that was five and not too long ago on Johnson's Ferry, if I recall. And, yeah, it was close to five because that's a different area. But in West Cobb, we've always tried to keep it less than what was allowed. So, you know, I'm open to any, any substitute or whatever, but I certainly feel that we should, you know, take a look at what my proposal was.
Well, I, I think the board never fails to amaze me by its openness. You know, that, the town owns that we just approved on Lander Road. Six weeks ago, I would have never given it a breath of, of a chance. So I think the reason that, that we have these decisions is that we do have the full errand on them and we, we all know we can openly express our opinion. And when you vote, it's at least the, you can always say that the common denominator is that it's a fully informed decision that you made because of the presentations made by the commissioners in support or opposition to a point. So I think with that, I think we can call the question. Any more discussion on that? Okay. In that case, I'll call the question. And it passes three to two with the Commissioner Ott and Chairman voicing opposition. So congratulations.
Okay. Rezoning case Z 39, Palmetto, Mapleton Floyd Road LLC. Request rezoning from NRC with stipulations to NRC with stipulations for the purpose of a restaurant with drive-through in land lots 31 and 42 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Floyd Road, north of Nick Jack Road. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Please raise your hands. Let the record show we have five people who are opposed. Is there anyone here in support of this application? Okay. So four in support or four opposed? Okay. Let the record show there's four opposed and one in support. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in. Let me correct that one more time. Let the record show there's five in opposition and one in support.
Awesome. Thank you. Morning. No problem at all. You're in charge, so I'll wait for you.
Well, I thought I was, apparently. It's good to see you again.
Certainly, you as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the, for the record, my name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant property owners in this application for rezoning. This property is just over an acre. It's 1.1 acres. It's located on Floyd Road. And the rezoning is a bit of a strange one in that it's currently zoned, neighborhood retail commercial, that is NRC with stipulations. And what we're proposing is NRC, neighborhood retail commercial with stipulations. So we're rezoning it from NRC to NRC, which we don't see that very often. In this case, it's because the existing zoning was zoned specific for a 9,000 square foot retail building specifically for specialty retail shops. And because of that specific zoning stipulations, we're required to take this back through the rezoning. What we're proposing is a Bojangles Restaurant to be developed and constructed on this one acre site. That's the proposed site plan here at Floyd Road, adjacent to Floyd Middle School. And I'd like to go back though, to the aerial that we had on the screen, if that was okay, to start and then kind of go from a, a higher level or aerial of, of this area and then go down to the specifics of this site. You'll see at the top of your screen, which is an aerial of Floyd Road, Floyd Road is running north to south on your screen, right in the middle. At the top is the subject property. Just above that on the top side is Floyd Middle School, adjacent to this property. Now, as you continue south in this corridor or across the street, you'll notice it says NRC. So this is the. So this is the limits of the Neighborhood Activity Center. As on this side is Neighborhood Activity Center, and you have NRC and NRC. That's a Hardee's that's already been built and the Lidl Grocery Store, which was approved at the end of last year, towards the end of last year, that is soon to be built and constructed directly across the street from this property. Then you have White Boulevard, which is a signalized intersection, is a traffic light. The big NRC on the right-hand side of your screen is the Kroger Shopping Center. The next shopping center down is the Public Shopping Center. Along the entire left-hand side are various NRC uses, including, let's start with the Hardee's at the top and going south is Hardee's and McDonald's, another strip center. And you, all the way as you go down, what there are is various fast food, drive-through restaurants, retail stores. And you end at the south side of Floyd Road on this particular corridor, so very well-defined corridor, with a Zaxby's, another fast food, drive-through restaurant. That's what this corridor is defined by, from the top to the bottom. That's where this is, and it's actually very well-done. You'll notice when you drive through there, the buildings have excellent architecture in terms of their materials. It's a lot of brick that's used. And both these shopping centers, it looks great. And it's a well-done, commercial corridor that's very confined and well-done. What we're proposing is consistent with that corridor. It's a Bojangles Restaurant, and we can turn, if we can go ahead and turn the site plan. It's a Bojangles Restaurant that would be built. It's also, we've submitted the elevations that would be all brick, as it faces. It'd be completely consistent with this area and with this corridor in terms of its look, in terms of its aesthetics, and in terms of its use. The only change that you see from the site plan that you see now is due to the opposition, the concerns that have been addressed to us by the school district, who seems to be very popular in the opposition here today, as well as from Mableton Improvement Coalition. You'll see there to the rear of this or the right-hand side of this site plan, it says access road. That was a road paid for by Cobb County. It's a public road that almost right now solely serves as access to Floyd Middle School. You'll see that we provided access to the rear so that we would have good operations and turning movements for Bojangles. We have made that decision internally in discussions to remove that access. So there will be no access to what is labeled the access road. And that is because there is a conflict with school traffic. That's where moms and dads comes and come and pick up their kids, and there's a lot of school traffic on that dedicated road. Bless you. And we've made that decision so that access will be no access to the school road or the access road. And instead, that'll just simply be landscaped all the way to the corner. Access will be limited to Floyd Road, which is seen on the top of this site plan. And also, you'll see there's an interparcial access to White Boulevard below, which is access to a traffic light. So you have the full turning movements there. Now, given all the circumstances and where this property finds itself and how it aligns exactly with the NRC across the street, the NRC below with those uses, you can see why the Cobb County Planning and Zoning Staff recommended approval. This property is already zoned NRC. Now it has certain restrictions on it. And those actually go as far as restricting certain uses under the existing zoning. The existing NRC zoning takes out certain uses. It says no tattoo parlors, no adult uses, and it gives several, about a half dozen different types of uses that are prohibited, even though they may be permitted under NRC. What it doesn't eliminate as a use under existing zoning is fast food restaurants or drive-through. Doesn't eliminate those, it just doesn't specifically identify them. But what is identified in this existing zoning is a nine thousand square foot retail building that could have a Starbucks, it could have a Dunkin' Donuts, it could have any other number of uses, other restaurant uses, specialty retail uses that would generate traffic and cars, just like is on Floyd Road now. The opposition to this application primarily is driven by, well, there are a lot of pedestrians and pedestrians in terms of school pedestrians, kids walking to school or bicycling to school to Floyd Middle School, and this will interfere with that. This will pose safety problems to those kids. We all are concerned about the safety of children going to school. But where this stands right now, this proposal of a Bojangles does not exacerbate an existing problem. They're safe going to school right now. They can be made safer going to school if the school district in Cobb County wants to do that. If there's an existing issue with child safety and going to school, that should be addressed by the school district and by Cobb County, which they can do very well here, if it's a problem. Simply adding one more retail, fast food, drive-through restaurant in an area that has them, an area that needs them, an area that wants them, is being done very well, doesn't exacerbate an existing problem, doesn't add to a problem, and doesn't create a problem. If that's the opposition to this, we just don't think and we just believe that that really doesn't hold water. That shouldn't be solved by relegating a site that's adjacent to a school, to simply sitting there, holding the world together, or simply being in some other type of retail use that will maybe or maybe not cause or result in the same effect upon the school. With that, what we have agreed to in terms of our stipulations is the all-brick building. We have agreed now to the elimination of the access to the access road, to remove that from it. We've also agreed to all the other stipulations that are in the underlying NRC zoning for which this thing is zoned for as it relates to dumpsters and hours and so forth, so that there is as little impact as possible. With that, we respectfully request that this board approve this zoning application following your planning and zoning staff's recommendation. I'm going to cut off the rest of my time for a gentleman who lives in the area who came to the planning commission and wants to speak in favor. I'm not used to that. So I was very excited that he showed up. So thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. David, you have the podium.
Commissioner, Board, and Director. That's fantastic, look, they're doing away with that drive up there. The people can't be fishing with their sacks, drinking their coffee and running over kids. That's, that's great, I'm happy they done that. The, I believe Judy Williams on the commission, she was all for it. She said, look, we have three entrances and exits. What are we doing? And she, she didn't deny it. So here we are. What do these people want? Two thousand and four, we're talking about car washes, as you got my letters. This ain't two thousand and four, this is two thousand and seventeen. We've got to move on. I mean, what are we going to build there? We had twenty-five years of building nothing. Two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen, nothing. Bojangles wants to come in, a successful business. They take care of their community. They're happy to serve the community. Instead, you want to put up a strip mall that's going to have maybe a hairdresser, a salon. Oh, I got it, a thrift store, let's put a thrift store in. Stay in business two, three months, they're out. Then you got an empty strip mall by school. So now the kids can't walk through the Bojangles parking lot, because we was worried about that. So, you know, what are we worried about now? I mean, you know, we've got to have a support somewhere. The lot's going to be there. The school had thirty years plus to buy the land. Why didn't they buy the land? So, I mean, you know, you got a lot, you got a lot of things in here that you got to think about before you just say, oh, Bojangles. No, it's about Bojangles. And, you know, they say to the north, what do you see up there, subdivisions? That's right, you see subdivisions, and in those subdivisions, out of Mapleton zip code are people that like Bojangles. So, you know, I'm sorry, I'm the only one that's coming in here talking about, I like Bojangles, I like Hardee's, I like, I like them all. So I'm just waiting to see how Liddy's come out, because I don't go to all these, so thank you very much.
Thanks, David. All right, we can reset the clock. You have a hard act to follow with that one, young lady.
It is. Good morning, Commissioner, well, afternoon now, I guess, Commissioners. My name is Sonya Wheatley, I'm with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I guess I should start by saying I have been to Bojangles and I like them also. I like a lot of fast food. I like chicken. I just don't want a chicken processing plant to be built beside my house. So it kind of goes along with my theme that there seems to be a question as to whether it's appropriate for you guys to zone. It's a bit strange to me to hear in this conversation whether it should, it's not, it's not about Bojangles. It is about, this property is NRC with very specific stipulations that were put in place specifically to prevent high-traffic businesses. No gas station, no car wash. By default, because you approved a site-specific plan, you know, it did zone out a fast food, drive-through restaurant whose very success depends upon high traffic. I mean, for them to be a successful business, which we want them to be, they need a whole lot of cars circling that drive as fast as they can, coming and going. I do realize that they eliminated the access, or say they are, to White. But it, the access which would come out of the existing strip mall, first of all, it's so narrow. I truly meant to go measure it. It almost creates more of an issue by having people, it's an interparcial access, if you can kind of zone in. If you see the narrowness, it's barely two cars long. So how people, we'd have two-way traffic coming and going through to that intersection, blocking it with, excuse me, with cars pulling, backing out of those parking spaces. That's one point we had not discussed anywhere to date that I did want to point out. There are really much more important people than me here to talk today, a parent and someone with a school board. So just a couple of quick points, if I may. You know, this, as I touched on, this proposal really is in exact opposition to the existing approval. It does have an approved use, it does have a site plan, it is retail. These, like I said, those stipulations were put in place to prevent high traffic, which is why the two times, I think maybe three before, the Mableton Improvement Coalition Board voted to oppose, but did approve when it came up with a specific retail use. You know, the business in addition really simply doesn't fit the property. If you look at almost every other fast food restaurant that we encounter, those buildings actually face the primary roadway. This building is facing the school. And part of the stipulations in the existing approved zoning prevents exterior signage. So having a giant Bojangles sign or Hardee's or any other business you could think of facing our school is definitely not in agreement with what has been previously approved. The suggestion that the already taxed school system, it did not come up here, but it has come up in previous conversations, that they could somehow make it safe by adding crossing guards, you know, telling our, not zoning appropriately, telling our school, well, hey, just pay for another crossing guard, seems odd to me. And sorry, I'm not used to reading glasses, so it's getting hard for me back and forth. The criteria really is health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Middle schools and parents going back and forth in front of a high-traffic business just simply doesn't seem appropriate. The, there was a lot of discussion in the previous case about traffic impact and safety. And this really goes directly to that. The businesses that were spoken of, being Hardee's, McDonald's, down the road is Zaxby's, they are on a corner. They have access directly to a traffic light, where someone can do a U-turn, can turn in, can access it directly. This is not the same. It is not across the street. It is on the edge of a neck where your intent, in my experience, has always been to keep higher traffic, higher intense uses, interior of the neck, not on the exterior. If a public institution, school, isn't something adjacent that should have a less traffic or a less intense use, I don't know what is. And I yield to the others, thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for hearing from me today. My name is Kate Kibb. I am a parent, I've lived in the Mableton area for thirteen years. I'm a parent of two children who attend Floyd Middle School. I also represent more than a dozen other parents I've spoken to, and I'm on the PTSA at Floyd. And we're very concerned about this. We appreciate the fact that they've removed one of the entrances. But the fact is, we have middle schoolers. My son is eleven years old, he's going to be going to school here, he's a responsible kid, but he rides his bike, along with his eighth grade sister, she's thirteen, they ride their bike to and from school every day. This will increase traffic in the entire intersection that they go through to a manner that's just unacceptable. There are one hundred and fifty children who are official walkers and bike riders to this school. That means three hundred children every day at the minimum, because a lot of them end up bringing friends home from school with them. So there's at least three hundred children a day who will pass by this restaurant in one of the ways that they go to school. And it's just adds in a lot of extra traffic for those three hundred children and three hundred extra possibilities of somebody getting hurt. In the mornings, people are in a hurry, the children come to school at different times, and it's difficult for the cars to be able to navigate through the students, who again, some of them come to school for morning activities before the crossing guards are there. And because activities at that school start almost an hour before school begins. In the afternoon, you have cars coming to pick children up from school, as well as all the additional traffic this would bring. And I just am extremely concerned about a child getting hurt. And to me, that's the most important thing in our community is student and family safety, and this impacts that. And I also want to say, this is different than the other retail shops and fast food restaurants that are along Floyd. Like I said, I've lived there thirteen years. The other shops and restaurants are a hundred percent different because of the way they are situated on intersections and at lights. This being actually, it'll feel like it's tucked up onto Floyd and a part of Floyd Middle School. It has a completely different feel than the other restaurants do. So it just will change the layout of the school and the feeling of the school to a way that I think won't improve our community in a healthy way. So I appreciate the time today. And again, I just want to point out, I really feel that three hundred students a day and their safety is a very, that's almost a third of the school. That's a very important thing for this board to consider, and I appreciate you thinking about that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Dennis Campbell again. I think we're getting a little bit too familiar today, but I'd like to express our concern with the safety of the children at this particular location also. This Bojangles will bring in a lot of traffic, that traffic will come through that traffic light where White Road is. You can see the crosswalks and the entrance that will be the main entrance into the, this establishment where the urgent care center and the Marcos Pizza is. That's a turn from the traffic light and then a quick turn again, left across traffic that is going in to drop off and pick up children. So there's already a whole lot of traffic there that has to be navigated by children and crossing guards and so forth. So we think this is still extremely unsafe. So we just want to make sure you understand our concerns, and thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought we had one more speaker. I guess not. Commissioner Cupid, this is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. I was ready to decide this case today until I received a call recently about the actual owner wanting to speak with me about this site. And the request was to see if we can wait, because I have not met with him. I've only talked to the representative for the zoning application, I've talked to the community. And I asked for them to at least present today because I thought it was fair for those members of the community who wanted to speak to have the opportunity to do so, because they would not have had advance notice that this may be continued. I share a lot of the concerns that have been shared. I can also understand the reasons why Bojangles thinks this is a fitting site. There still is a tall hurdle to climb. And, you know, I try to be mindful of letting people have opportunity to vet their side of the application as much as possible. It's my understanding that the representative has spoken to the opposition, and I think there's some willingness for us to hold this for thirty days so that we can consider these issues a little bit more. But I do plan to make a decision come our next zoning here. And I just want to, let me just clarify.
Sure.
I do want to mention one thing to the board. There was a, if you go back to the this here, there was a Lidl application that was opposed from the community, and I also opposed because we were very concerned about the level of intensity at the edge of this neck that's here. There was always the intent, and it was even stated in the future land use map, for us to be reducing intensity as you get towards the edge of this neck. So I just wanted the board to be mindful that that's something that I'll also be considering, is that it has always been a desire, so much so it was even stated in our future land use map, to reduce the intensity as you go further north into this neck. But with that, I'm going to make a motion that we hold this case until our August zoning date.
Second, I have a question, if you don't mind.
We have a second, and Commissioner Weatherford has a question.
Could you tell me what this NRC is below there?
Right, me too.
Yes, it's a urgent care facility, and half of it, and half of it is Marcos Pizza. Yes, it's a urgent care facility in half of it, and half of it is Marcos Pizza.
And over here on the other side is a...
This is, I'm sorry, where? Across from White Boulevard? Yes, that's a Arby's.
It's being built or something?
It's already, well, this is an older map. That's already been built. Did I might get that right? It's Hardee's? I'm sorry, Hardee's. Don't let me confuse it, too.
Non-chicken.
Non-chicken.
Okay, thank you.
It's a health food establishment.
Any other questions? All right, call the question? Hello?
I don't know. Thank you.
It passes five to zero to continue the case. You see, you're going to the same affliction that Iowa, you thought there was one more speaker. That's what I'm saying. I thought there was another speaker.
We are done.
Really?
Not in the way. It's all done.
Okay, in that case, I call it to adjourn.